We're gonna start our meeting for Thursday, July the ninth at four o'clock, our special CMT meeting that we have. I will read a procedure and then we'll get into our roll call and go forward. Pandemic advisory due to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency, this meeting is being held virtually by Communications Media Technology, CMT. I would like to remind everyone participating in all meetings of the city to conduct themselves professionally and follow the proper procedures and protocol. This includes myself as mayor and chair of this council. With council members on camera and without the normal distractions of an open council chamber up close, CMT meetings create a much more initial intimate and personal experience for the public. We must all be mindful of that negative body language contributes to poor decorum. Let's remember to be patient and professional while following proper decorum. For the virtual meeting to run efficiently, we should not talk over each other. For virtual attendees who wish to participate during the meeting, during the public participation portion of the meeting, click the hand icon near the upper right-hand corner of the screen. Turn your microphone on, please be patient, staff will unmute your microphone and inform you that you are live and ask you to start with your name and city of residence and you can then begin to speak. You will have three minutes to speak, please use appropriate decorum. The council can then choose to respond to your comment and we will move on to the next commentator until all have been heard. If you click the hand icon accidentally clicking, the hand icon again will lower your hand. Rapidly clicking it multiple times, multiple times to raise your hand may cause your hand icon to not display properly to staff. Staff will only be monitoring the raised hand functions, the question functions will not be monitored. Okay, we can move into our meeting. This is July the ninth, two thousand twenty, four o'clock, we're holding this meeting by CMT and we can call the meeting to order with the pledge allegiance. Uh, Mr. Brown, would you please lead us, please, sir?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Kellam?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
I don't know where she went. Angela is here, she's got her, her computer on pause for a reason. Okay, we'll move forward, public participation, anybody can participate in this meeting with an agenda item or any, anything that you want to speak about to the council before we get into the agenda. By doing so, you have a website showing on the screen. If we could scroll up just a little bit, please, or it's there, I'm sorry, I see it at the top. It's also at the top of the agenda where you can participate. Just follow the directions and the moderator will call upon you when it's time. Okay, we're gonna go into our first item. It's the resolution two, two thousand twenty dash seventeen. This is encouraging the citizens of Cape Canaveral to wear face masks and participate in social distancing. Uh, I don't know, uh, if somebody, uh, is Anthony gonna read the resolution, is he on board?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, would you? Anthony, do you want to read the resolutions, please?
Sure, let me, um, let me pull it up here.
Twenty twenty seventeen.
Yep, it's, uh, resolution number twenty twenty dash seventeen, it's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, encouraging the citizens, businesses and visitors of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida to exercise personal responsibility in slowing the spread of COVID-19, more specifically urging persons to wear face covering and places open to the public throughout the City of Cape Canaveral in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, subject to certain exceptions, urging persons to practice safe social distancing and other safety measures recommended by the Centers for Disease Control to minimize the spread of COVID-19 virus, encouraging persons to stay safer at home when possible to minimize the spread of COVID-19 virus, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions, applicability, severability and an effective date. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right, council, it's open to discussion and I'm sure you've all had a chance to read it, it's, uh, a kind of really a proactive and reactive, I guess you might say, to what's going on and what has happened with the small soft openings that have been taking place. And I think there's, uh, other councils have already passed resolutions and, um, to my knowledge, it's been about three on the beach side. And ours is kind of a little bit more lengthy, goes into more detail than what the Cocoa Beach one was, and I believe Indian Harbor Beach and Satellite Beach. Ours is quite lengthy, uh, I'm sure you've all read it and if anybody wants to speak on this and bring forward some points that would be different or to your concern, just speak up, we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Kellam. I'll start on the left of the screen because everybody's laid out that way, so. Ms. Kellam?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, um, I'm, I'm just really encouraged about this, um, resolution for our city and to, um, you know, get it out there that the city is wanting of the people, the visitors and the citizens to take care of themselves, do what's right, um, you know, to try to contain the spread of this as best, as best as we can with a, with an enemy that we can't see. I think Anthony really covered all the bases, um, and I think it's a really good resolution and I'm happy to, that we have it before us tonight, um, that's really all I have to say, thank you, Anthony, it looks really good.
Thank you.
Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so yeah, I did get a chance to read through this, Mr. Mayor, came in about ninety-five minutes ago, I read through it once, there are some issues, um, that I see in it or concerns and I wanted to talk about it, but I guess more of a higher level, um, comment on this is, you know, when it comes to medical recommendations, you know, I don't know how many people are gonna be trusting by the elected officials, um, I think we listen to the CDC at the federal level, um, we listen to our own doctors at our local level, we listen, the Florida Department of Health at the state level, maybe our, um, county health department, the subdivision of that, and I think we all know our own bodies, we saw the exceptions in here for the people that it would not apply to, and what I keep thinking about is just what, what is gonna be the effect of this? The real penalty in here, uh, I don't, obviously the people who are wearing masks already, this isn't gonna stop them from wearing masks, they're gonna continue to wear masks. Um, the people who are not wearing masks because of whatever reason, uh, medical reasons, some of them, some of them just do not want to wear masks, um, there's nothing, I don't know how this is going to change their behavior that much. And further, we all know Cape Canaveral, um, is, you know, this is a meeting, it was called pretty quickly, uh, we just got our hands on this, how many citizens even know about this? And so I'm watching our social media and I see, you know, the, the updates that go out, they, and we're, we're already going out and, and putting out CDC recommendations, we're putting out face mask recommendations, um, saw from the White House, uh, reopen America again, whatever, that, that, that statement, uh, that came out, it talked about face masks and that, as a, those were guidelines. We saw the, uh, the, um, the, the local levels and recently Florida Department of Health, you know, saying these recommendations, but when you get into the phase two reopening at the Florida, uh, Governor DeSantis, you know, there's, there's nothing really in there that talks about face masks, and I think the reason why was because, you know, we're policymakers, don't ask me about medical decisions, I've talked a little bit about making policy with, with each one of you, I enjoy that, I study that, and I think we all, uh, we're in this position because we, we want to make a difference in a positive way, but you see this trend happening that, you know, policy kind of, they draw a line in the sand, uh, and the reason why is because it's hard to apply this to everyone and without no penalty and it, I think we would all agree that if you want a high compliance rate, we would put a penalty in here, um, if we want people to adhere to this, we would, we would do a mandate today, and I think we've all heard people who want that, and I think we saw some emails coming in saying, hey, this doesn't go far enough. I agree with every one of those, uh, people that if you want compliance, somebody is much more likely to put a mask on if they face a five hundred dollar fine or a second degree misdemeanor. Now, on the other hand of that, I don't think that's right, that's just my individual reviews. And with our comprehensive health plan to be consistent with the county, for those of you who watched the county meeting, when they took this issue up, I think Lober, uh, our commissioner, District Two, was in support, the remaining super majority of the commissioners, four to one, was against, this was a one thirty PM meeting, it was short notice as well, just a couple days, and gosh, I want to say two hours of public comments, there was people who were for it, but the vast majority of the people were against the face mask, and we heard all types of reasons from, hey, this is my liberty, this is my right, all the way to, I've got a personal health reason, I don't want to wear it. And I think we've seen some padded ordinances come out, like the mayor you referenced, um, at the city's level, and my concerns are, I'm following this, I'm watching cities do it, and we saw Orange County, we see Orlando, we saw Cocoa Beach, Satellite, Jacksonville, St. Augustine, the list keeps going on and on, and you see, right after these get passed, lawsuits are, are trailing them, um, Representative Sabatini has been very outspoken about this, who practices law in the state of Florida as well, um, and I went and I dug up the lawsuit, um, the complaint that he filed with the City of St. Augustine, now theirs does go further than ours, but when I read through it, I replaced the City of St. Augustine in my head as I was reading it and I put City of Cape Canaveral in there, I took out the word mandate and I put in the word encourages, and the concerns that jumped out to me was the three, um, areas, and I've heard constitutional right, um, this particular suit was really focused on due process, Article one nine of the Florida State Constitution, uh, privacy clause, Article one twenty-three of the Florida Constitution, and he actually references their own charter, and, and those, to me, um, when I read ours, I think that it's, it, it's going to come off, it can be confusing, and I think arbitrary enforcement, arbit- arbitrary discrimination and judgment could come out of this, most of the folks aren't paying attention tonight in Cape Canaveral, and when this thing comes out and it gets published on social media, that, we all know, like the game of telephone, there's gonna be few people who think that this is mandatory, there's gonna be some people who think, who understand that it's not mandatory, and I asked myself, is it really worth it? You know, the compliance is gonna be, put some teeth in it, put the, use the, the, the emergency powers, but to come out with this, I think what it's gonna do is create some confusion, instead, you know, we are, we can, you know, when it comes to medical health, it's great, I will say now, I believe we should all be wearing face masks, I personally wear a face mask, um, as much as I possibly can, especially if I'm gonna be in a congested area, I've heard the arguments on the other side, I respect them, but for me and my understanding and the little bit I know, when I read through it, face mask makes a whole lot of sense, you know, whether it's perfect, no, but I feel like it is going to mitigate my ability to transmit this to other people and it's, and it is gonna protect, I mean, it's just, there's something over my face that's gotta help, but I don't, I can't say that for each individual, I can't speak as a policymaker on what's right for your individual circumstance. And so when you look at, um, privacy clause, Article one twenty-three in the St. Augustine suit, uh, it talks about, um, you know, now somebody doesn't wear it, now they've gotta, you know, say, well, I, I know that my city encourages it, but, um, it's not good for me because my doctor doesn't recommend it, I get a lung issue, I've got asthma, I use an inhaler two to three times today, and I just think that this, the outcome, I do think there will be a marginal gain, but when I think about the people who are gonna be watching this, the people that are not wearing it for medical reasons, I don't think this is gonna change them, they've got their studies and they say, no, look, you know, it, it actually can kill you, it can cause problems, and, you know, I don't have time to read through all of the journals and peer review data, but I say, fine, that's your decision, so I don't think we're gonna change that group, I don't know who this group of people in Cape Canaveral that's gonna go, now that my city council has come together and we all voted as a majority for an encouragement, well, now I'm gonna put my mask on. I think that what really will work is that when businesses, and we saw this is with the county, did the county did not do anything with face masks, but they did help with the sign, and I've got a copy of it where you can go download it and it says something to the effect of this establishment does require face masks and this is, or this establishment does not require face masks, so a business could get both of them, they could put that on their door, and when people go to eat and that restaurant says, hey, to come in here, just like a shirt or a dress code, it's not discriminatory, they will have a decision to make, either they'll give them their money for food, or they'll take their money somewhere else and be offended that they have to wear masks, or they, there's a health reason, and I think that each individual restaurant owner, business owner, I'm just using restaurants as an example because I think that's the areas where there's a high probability, I think that that's gonna have a, a much greater effect, but I don't, they don't need one thing from this council, they don't need a permission slip from us to do that, they can do that right now, and if we use our energy to encourage the businesses to take what the county has put out, the county designed it online, maybe we print them as a city and council, maybe we all distribute them or, or we mail it to them, you know, I can go drop off a few myself to them and, and say, hey, totally optional, if you want to put this under business, I think that will have an effect, but for me, I've got some other points in here, um, I don't know if a resolution is the right way, you know, if we are gonna do this, I think, Anthony, maybe this is inappropriate, but a proclamation might be a better one, um, I am concerned about due process, um, and I can cite the, the, um, I've got the, the whole lawsuit here and I was marking it up, trying to follow it through, um, that, that's an issue, and then the vagueness of it, and when I actually get into our resolution here, things that jumped out to me where it says, um, if we go to page three of six of this resolution, page three of six, not of the agenda packet of the resolution, under section two, personal responsibility, says the City Council encourages the citizens, businesses and visitors of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida to exercise personal responsibility and accountability in slowing the spread of COVID-19, that's pretty vague, and I think we all like that, and I think that was your, your point, but you know, that we want self-responsibility, but I can see how someone, it's arbitrary and, and, you know, what is personal responsibility, it's different for me than you, and so now we've got this vague issue and there also, um, on page four of six, under section three, in the exceptions, it says a face covering shall not be required for the following persons, and then it goes through and lists all the different types, think about that, a face covering shall not be required, what's the opposite of shall not be required? Shall be required, so I don't think the majority of the people are gonna read this, when this gets out, it's gonna be like, well, now face, and we know sometimes the media can create the headline that doesn't tell the whole story, the headline says Cape Canaveral votes on face masks, now everyone thinks you gotta have face masks, and if somebody's reading the exceptions, which is a likely place for people to go to say, am I accepted, it says face mask shall not be required, somebody's gonna say, well, if I'm not in those exception, then it is required, so if I'm not under the age of two, if I'm not maintaining social distance, well, then it's required, and so that wording creates some confusion, and that's my big concern, the vagueness, the confusion, the privacy, the medical privacy clause, Article one twenty-three, the, the sense of judgment in our community, and it all came from us, five council members, our medical professionals are, are say, are putting the guidelines out, the federal and state level, I do think that's far enough, I do support, you know, running ads to get the message out, but I'm not sure that a proclamation from us is worth it because we could see a lawsuit come our way and then whether or not we want to defend it or not is irrelevant, I think we all have faith in our legal representation, but would it be worth it, would it be worth the process and the, 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 um, the, the legal bandwidth that's gonna take? I don't think it would be, all for an encouragement, um, so those are my points, I got some more, I know I've spoke a little long here, but, um, there's others, and section K, it talks about students at any location under control of the school, um, you know, why aren't we talking to the school and saying students under the location of the school are encouraged to, um, also, under, um, exceptions, it says, this one really gets people upset, public safety, fire and other life safety and healthcare personnel, as their personal protective equipment requirements will be governed by their respective agencies, why aren't we telling, you know, our first responders aren't any more, less likely to spread this than, than, than we are, why aren't we saying to them that we encourage public safety and fire, and so it's like there's some immunity there where their own agencies will regulate them, um, those are my comments, I probably have just a few more, but those are my concerns, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, the effect of this, I don't think is going to really scale up a lot of a compliance, I think if you're gonna do this, you gotta put teeth in it, you gotta go all the way, I am not in support of that, but I believe that that will be the most effective way to get this done, so, thank you.
Mr. Morrison, you mentioned you had a couple more comments, go ahead and let them out, let's hear what everybody has to say, because this is something that's out there and it needs to be, it needs to be heard.
Thank you, um, give me a second there, um. It's City Cape Canaveral, um, time, uh, penalties, um, I didn't see anything about penalties, if we go back to the parking thing, where there is no penalty in our code, it shall be a five hundred dollar fine and or second degree misdemeanor because we are under a civil emergency, um, the penalties here, there's nothing talking about it, um, you know, it needs to explicitly say that there will be no penalties, in my opinion, um, if you're gonna, if it, I hope, you know, I don't support this as of now, but if it goes through, I hope it comes out with that, because it could come back that we have the right to impose because there is no, there is no penalty and therefore it's set at that five hundred dollar second degree misdemeanor, and so while you, if you read it kind of lightly, I think it does say encourage, but I can see how an attorney could get a hold of this and just drive us crazy, all for an encouragement, um, I think that is it, Mr. Mayor, um, looking through here as fast as I can, confusion I wrote down was, was something that I think can come out, subject to interpretation, um, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brown, Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Ho, um, Mayor Ho, council members Morrison, Raymond and Kellam, please tell me we're not having this special meeting to encourage the citizens, businesses and visitors to exercise personal responsibility, that time has come and gone, our city has forty-four confirmed cases of COVID-19, on May eighth, at our special meeting, we had two, on May eighth, were we not under CDC recommendations as far as encouraging the use of masks and social distancing, we all know the answer to that, on the definition of encouragement is positive, giving hope for future success, hope is an optimistic attitude of mind based on an expectation or desire, we don't need encouragement, we don't need hope, we need mandates requiring the use of masks while inside of businesses, this is not a political issue, it's a public safety issue, we don't need to think of ourselves, we need to think about the vulnerable people in our community, face covering should be required at city-owned and, and city-operated facilities, which we already have, every business deemed essential shall require customers, patrons, invitees and employees to utilize face coverings while in the store business, this cut, this requirement shall be posted on the entryway or visible in a conspicuous manner for customers to read, I like what Cocoa Beach did, they came out with a mandate, or excuse me, not mandate, it's a emergency order, and it basically says that the city requires that every person working, living, visiting or doing business in the City of Cocoa Beach, wear a face covering in any indoor public location other than the home or residence and any public outdoor location when not maintaining social distancing, they put this in place without, without any, um, what can I say, um, restricted, or penalties, so they're making a requirement and they leave it up to, after this requirement, they leave it up to these businesses to make sure they enforce it, and I, I like that idea, Brevard County set a record today for COVID-related deaths, which was six, encouragement does not go far enough, we need mandates, thank
Ms. Kellam, or I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Angela Raymond?
Thank you. I'm finally unmuted, thank you, I agree, I agree with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brown, this particular resolution does not have enough teeth, I have in front of me the paper from yesterday and the paper from today, and I've been looking at the different mandates that came out, I like what Satellite Beach did, when they enacted their face mask mandate, they gave it enough teeth, they told people exactly what would happen if they didn't wear a mask, uh, and that is interesting, they say violators could face warnings and increasing civil fines of up to five hundred dollars, police officers and code enforcement officers can enforce the mask mandate, Barker said, fine for a first offense is a hundred dollars, increasing to two fifty for a second offense, and five hundred for the third and successive offenses, uh, they don't have a lot of business, I think that, um, the whole point is for the public indoor businesses, we definitely need to have a required mask, the train has left the station, and what I mean by that, this has gone on too far, I'm sorry, I don't want to place blame on anyone else in particular, however, this is what leadership is all about, and I have to say, for us, a country like ours, that is supposed to be so far advanced in technology and science, this is a shame, and I am embarrassed being an American at this point, Canada is really doing very well, they've closed their country off, I feel that this is an impossibility at this point because because this has gone on too far for us and for our state. We are the red zone now. And I think that we have to look at our residents. Our residents are pretty much at a very vulnerable age. And I think that our first priority always should be the health, welfare, safety and security of our residents. I have received a lot of telephone calls. I have received a lot of the email overwhelmingly in support of having a required mask mandate for indoor businesses. I do think that outdoors, we are fine. I think that we're safe. I think most of us are very intelligent. And we understand about social distancing. We understand about the importance of wearing a mask. And I think with a mask, it a mask shows something more than just protecting ourselves. We're protecting other people. We're showing that we are responsible, mature adults. And I think that we have all the information here for people who are the exceptions. And I think this is the right thing to do. And for us not to make a mandate just based on that somebody might give a gift, might sue us is ridiculous. I think that we wouldn't be able to do anything if we had that thought in our heads. But leadership, we have to take a leadership role in this and we have to use our common sense. And we have to move forward on this. Another reason why we need to do this is we talked about the beach parking being shuttered. And we were told, oh, we can't do that in Cape Canaveral because we need to be consistent with the other beachside cities. Well, now we need to be consistent with the beachside cities. And we need to go ahead and say we need to have a mask mandate and a mask mandate with some teeth in it. Because just saying you should do this or you're encouraged to do this is not good enough for our residents and our visitors. And we were very good March, April and May. And our science told us that very clearly. So we need to protect ourselves as us as a city, as a city, and we need to put our citizens first. Thank you.
Okay. We've heard all four of you. I have got my say to come. I would uh, I'd like to say, first of all, there is forty-four cases in Cape Canaveral that we know of. And twenty-six deaths in Bravard County. Outdoor activities. There's a lot of outdoor activities that we have close socializing distances. We got outdoor activities where you can maintain six feet real easy. Beach, for instance. A lot of people run the beach every morning. A lot of people go to the beach, exercise. They even do, do the Zumba classes down there sometimes. So a lot of people go to the beach for exercise. A lot of people run on the bike paths. There's been emails today about the distancing outside and exercising with a mask on of CO2 problems. I have a CO2 problem when I wear a mask. I have, I have an emphysema problem coming on. Been doing the doctor things with that. But it does bother me, but I do wear it only when I go in a place where I know I'm going to be there longer than I want to be there. And it's close proximity. Otherwise, I don't go into the stores. I don't go into the Publix. I don't go into Walmart. I only go if I have to go and believe it's a short minute run in, run out, I'm out of there. And I wear my mask because I I don't want to wear it. I can't really wear it. But I will wear it when I need to. Yes, it's a responsibility of my own to wear it when I need to. It's a responsibility of everybody to do it. Mandating, it's another story. You're going to have people that still won't do it with a mandate. And I I looked at Cocoa Beach's ordinance or or their resolution that they passed. And yes, it mandates that that must wear it, but this also has the exceptions. Uh, first responders was mentioned here and it's mentioned in also everybody else's basically. First responders, they take care of themselves. We don't need to tell the first responders to wear a mask. They, they are far ahead of this on we are. And they have certain equipment that they have to wear where they can't wear a mask. So they'll take care of themselves. No penalties on it. You might as well not even have it. If you're going to just say, oh, you know. I think the schools, if the school does take up, the school will have their their rules. Otherwise, the children won't be going to school. I know, uh, I know some people that aren't going to let their children go back to school, even if they open them. Already heard that out there, so. The outdoor activities, the emails today that came in questioning about email, emails outside. Would they run? They ride their bikes? They run? They don't want to wear a mask? Well, if you're outside and you're six, 10, 12, 15 feet apart, you don't need to wear your mask. You don't need to wear it outside while you're social distancing. Mandated for the indoors? Yeah, I believe you go into a place, you should wear your mask. Essential businesses. Uh, that's going to be kind of tough to to uh, enforce that. Unless you go by there every day and check and see that they're doing it. We can put all this stuff in there and and put it out there that uh, I don't know what we can do tonight as far as changing this, what you have before you. I thought it was pretty good. The word encouraging is pretty strong, but there's a lot of people that you're going to mandate, you might as well just put the word encourage. So I it's how the council wants to go. I'm for, I'm for mandating if we can enforce it. Um. You can enforce encouraging. I don't think you're going to enforce mandating, but what do you want to do as far as mandating it and enforcing? That's the big problem. Um, y'all think about that? And we can go back through it again and get everybody's take on that. But if you want to mandate, you're going to have to have penalty and how you're going to enforce. Uh, it's strong to mandate. It's strong, very strong. Encourage. You don't need a penalty. You can just tell the people that, hey, you know, you do what's best for yourself. That's basically what the governor's saying. He's leaving it to everybody. The cities, the counties, you, the guys, figure it out for yourselves. He wants to reopen the state is what he wants to do. And he's doing that little by little and and you can see what's happening with the uh, the cases that you got in the state of Florida today. So I'm I'm uh, I'm going to go, I'm going to go with the majority. I don't know. Looks like it's going to be a mandate, but you guys have to tell me and tell the, tell the legal office what mandate you want to make, how you want to enforce it and what your penalties want to be. You just can't say you're going to mandate it. You got to have something to put out there. And then you're going to have to please the public. You're going to make a lot of mad, you're going to make a lot happy. So you want leadership, that's what you got to do. You got to bite the bullet and do it. Don't throw something out there that's got one wing and it don't fly, but it's, you think it's going to fly. I've said all I can say. I don't uh, I'm I'm for, I'd like to see this stuff go away. Everybody would, but you got people that aren't going to do what you say. You got speed limits, people don't drive the speed limit, people go down the one-way streets, you got all kinds of rules. And they don't follow them. So you think about how you want to put this together? If we can put it together tonight, we'll put it together. Otherwise, you'll have to come back again, take a bite at it again. Ms. Kellam, go ahead. You got your hand up.
Yes, I would like to ask Anthony a couple of questions if we could. Um, Anthony, you're there?
Yep, I'm here.
If if we mandate this, are we more susceptible to lawsuits if we mandate people wearing masks? Than we would if we, as a city and a council, encourage people to do what's right for themselves? And I mean, we put the clause in there for the businesses to put on their doors that um, when they, when they're coming in, that uh, it would say on their door, whether you know, they want you to wear a mask or not. A lot of businesses around town are closing on their own because they're governing themselves. Um. So my question is, how how likely are we, if we mandate this, to get more lawsuits than if we just as a city encourage people to take care of themselves and their other citizens?
Okay, so I'm abundantly clear. This resolution is not drafted in a form to mandate anything or to impose anything on any person or business in the city. It's total uh, encouragement and and urging citizens and businesses and visitors to follow appropriate CDC guidelines and face masks. So it's it's non-binding, non-mandatory. If the city council wanted to impose face coverings, then we'd have to kind of go back to the drawing board and restructure this whole resolution to impose that as a requirement. Currently, based on, based, based on my knowledge, there are approximately eleven lawsuits filed in the state of Florida challenging the imposition of face masks or face coverings on persons. There are a myriad of approaches and um, resolutions or ordinances or in some cases, emergency, administrative emergency measures that have been imposing face coverings, especially in the last couple of weeks. And, you know, again, my count is about eleven lawsuits. So the answer to your question is if you went to a mandatory imposition of face coverings, the likelihood of being sued, I think, increases because you're imposing something on a person. This doesn't impose anything. So the likelihood of a lawsuit on this current resolution is slim to none. If one was filed, I think it would be so futile um, of a lawsuit that it it would be dismissed because it lacks an imposition on anybody. So it's just a statement of the city council. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, and is there a difference, Anthony, between a resolution and a proclamation?
Proclamations are something that mayor usually issues. Um, this is a re- a resolution as something of a temporary measure being in, being adopted by this, by the city council. Proclamations are more ceremonial. Um, if you, and if the council wanted to adopt any emergency measure, it would have to be by a resolution or ordinance. Um, even in, in my opinion, even encouraging somebody to do something under this emergency. The council should be speaking in the form of a resolution, not a proclamation. Um, that's my, in my view.
Okay. Okay, um, and the other, uh, you know, if you look at the exceptions that we have um, on here. You know, you talk about restaurants. If somebody walks into a restaurant, they have to have a mask on. But soon as they start to drink or eat, they don't have to have a mask on. So are they going to not spread the COVID once they start eating and drinking? Um, you know, as far as people exercising, I, you know, I think that it's, it's important, like when you go to Publix to wear a mask. Yes. If you can't keep six feet from people, wear a mask. But I think with all the exceptions, people, um, the ADA covering. People like my husband has COPD. He can't wear a mask. So if you mandate it and somebody comes up to you and says, um, why aren't you wearing a mask? You know, what about HEPA and the health regulations? You don't have to share your personal health um, problems with people. I don't see how mandating it is enforceable. Um. And and all the exceptions, people eating and drinking, persons exercising while maintaining social distances. You know, I I think with the exceptions, are we going to have code enforcement go around the city and ask people why they're not wearing masks if we mandated? I just, I mean, as a city, I I believe that we need to put a statement out that we encourage it for our citizens and our visitors and the businesses to, you know, wear a mask. Um. I don't see how walking in, wearing a mask when you walk in and then taking it off while you're eating and drinking is helping. Um, I just don't think that it should be mandated. And this, you know, the CDC says it in itself that there is no insurance of zero risk of infection, infection. You know, it's, I understand and the numbers are up. We have forty-four people in Bravard County. That's cumulative. That's counting the first two people that we had for a long time that are probably over it now. And in the paper, like Ms. Raymond was saying, uh, it says forty-four people and it says Cape Canaveral and part of Cocoa Beach. If you take that population and divided by forty-four people, it's less than one percent of the people in, in this area that have it. Um, I think that we're all old enough to, and you know, I train my family, my kids, my grandkids. Wash your hands, wear a mask when you're in a group of people, social distance. But I don't think that we shouldn't mandate it. Uh, I, that's just my opinion. I know, you know, people. Are we gonna, you know, everybody's in tough situations now. Are we going to find people for not wearing a mask? Um. Are we going to get into people's health? You know, why aren't you wearing a mask? Well, it's none of your business. I have a, a physical problem. I just think it's, it's not um, manageable. It's not controllable. Um, and you're going to have some people that not, even if you mandate it, aren't going to wear a mask. I I, and I understand where um, Mr. Brown's coming from and the rest of the council. I absolutely agree. This is awful, but it's an invisible enemy that is going to be here for a long time. Um, and we have to take care of ourselves and our families and our businesses. And I'm proud of the businesses that are shutting down on their own to protect the people, but they should have that right. They shouldn't be mandated to do do that. Thank you.
Mayor, can we go back through kind of in the order? Is that? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, yes. I'll get everybody. We'll just go back through you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So when you said, uh, Mayor, that you were going with the majority, I just want to be crystal clear. Um, I am much more keen to to this than a mandate. And so if you heard from me saying, I did say that a mandate would be more effective. But I want to be clear and we've heard our city attorney and I agree with Mickey. That is not a path that we, we should be going down. Eleven lawsuits and and here's what's important. It's kind of a rebuttal to what Councilmember Raymond said. I agree with you, Councilmember Rooney. We shouldn't go around, you know, not taking action in fear of a lawsuit. Either you're right or you're wrong. What I'm saying is that these lawsuits, when I look at, especially the one in St. Augustine, I agree with the lawsuit. I think the city isn't the wrong. And we stay consistent with the county. If the city goes off and does that, you know, that's, that's up to them. I think that's a risk Cocoa Beach has taken. And so just, I am for encouraging, but my point that I was trying to make is we are already encouraging. This does not move the arrow and get people putting on face masks. I will stand with all of you, you know, let the record show that we all support face masks. You put a, just a declaration out that says that. This resolution, to me, while it, and I hear our city attorney, it's unlikely to get a lawsuit. This, it's not worth unlikely getting a lawsuit. Like if it's a ten percent, one out of ten, or a five percenter. If it's one percent chance, it's not worth it because it's not going to be good policy, in my opinion. This is not effective policy. But in no way am I supporting um, going for a mandate. And so if you're judging the majority, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Kellam on this. Um, and so now it's kind of in the middle. But that's it. I think that we should strongly steer away from a mandate. And I think that we can do, we have some. And I think that we can do, we have some solutions to go out and get involved with our businesses and give them the tools that they need to promote face masks. I think that's what's going to be effective. When we create a culture of fining people, if you have not watched that county commission meeting, and you don't believe that it's going to be an uproar if we come out with a mandate, and I would agree with them, the uproar, it's not right. It's immoral. And I think that, Mayor, you are the testament. What you said nailed it. When you go outside, you know, me and you are are different. We were born in different years. And the data shows that the older you get, the more at risk, especially if you have coexisting. But that doesn't mean that I just get to go and run around. I'm very cognizant of how I conduct myself, and I want to be respectful to everyone out there. So number one, I stay six feet away from as many people as I possibly can. And if we're all doing that, which we saw from the governor, the face mask isn't really needed. Now, when we get into those grocery stores, because we all got to eat, and we're going down, we're turning the corner, somebody, it's possible that you can get encroached. That's why we just have the mask on. It just works a little bit easier. But for me, you said it, you're going out, you're only going in when you absolutely have to. I think most people are just like you, Mr. Mayor. My neighbors who are in, you know, seventy, eighty years old, they are staying indoors as much as possible. That self-responsibility, I think that's what represents, we have seen, that's not just my, yes, the data has clearly shown that in Florida, while positive cases are increasing, it is younger people. And so I think that there's a reason why the average age, the median age is younger. It's because those people at risk know they're at risk. They know if they have other issues, but it's not my job to probe for that. And so what I was saying was that this, to me, it would be better to just do nothing than to do this because it does have a small chance of a lawsuit. So why go through it? For what gain are we gonna get? I will stand with you, Councilmember Kellum, and I think we all agree that face masks are here. We don't need to use a resolution as an instrument to do this. This just tees it up for an aggressive attorney to come in and to just join the pack, and it's just not worth it. It's not worth the risk. The upside isn't great enough here. And so I encourage us to consider delaying. I mean, we've only had this, you know, again, ninety minutes before the meeting. If we could sleep on it, no action's better than action with this. But if we have to vote on it, I'm saying, you know, just, I would vote against it and certainly would not support taking any action on any mandate or considering that tonight. I don't think that's a wise choice. That's something you want to involve the people too. And so those are my my comments. Thank you.
My comment back to you, Mr. Morrison, would be the thing that I stated was I would support the council's doings on this. You, particularly when you started off, you were saying that you wanted more teeth in this ordinance. There was no penalties, that there should be penalties. This is what you stated, and that's why I was saying, when you mandate something of that nature, you better be ready to do what you want to do. You don't have any mandate here. You don't have penalties. You don't have any, what is the penalty? But you were stating that you need to do that. Well, if you're gonna do that, I'm telling you, I would support the council if you put it all together, but you better be real careful in what you put in that ordinance. What we have here is an ordinance that doesn't supersede Cocoa Beach's ordinance, but it's basically telling you the same thing Cocoa Beach is telling you without the requires word in there. We encourage. I don't think anybody's gonna sue you for encouraging somebody to do something of this nature. But you're gonna get suits out of one that mandates what you put in there. I'm not no legal beagle the best by any means, but I do understand what we're reading here is kind of lawsuit-free. It's encouraging people. They don't have to do it. And the problem with today is the people don't pay attention to what they're doing. The younger crowd don't care. It's very evident. You go to places where the younger people hang out, and they're all over the place, just standing right next to each other, talking, laughing, arms around each other, and they opened the bars. That was one of the biggest mistakes they made for Brevard County. You saw how fast they got closed. So I will support what the council wants to do, but I won't support something that I know that we can't enforce. But whatever you guys put out here, I'll back you on it, but I'm gonna be very careful on what I'm backing, because I'm not gonna put the city into a lawsuit position.
And I'll just reply, I can see how you came to the conclusion that when I said, if you're gonna do it, it needs more teeth. I didn't say that, and if I said that, I apologize.
That's what you said.
I said, if you want it to be effective, you need to be, you need to put some teeth in it. But I did come out of the end and clearly say, I do not agree with that. I don't think that's right. There's a lot of effective laws. There's a lot of dictators and kings. They're very effective, but it's not moral. It's not the right thing to do. But just want to clarify, and I'm sorry for the confusion. I didn't.
They're only kings because they're dictators, and you do what they say, or otherwise you're gonna be fertilizing the flowers. That's my take on this is, I think you should be self-responsible. And yes, it has a lot of good points. There's some good points that came out in the emails that were already, that are in this ordinance, if the people read the ordinance, for what they wanted. It's in there. It's covered. And I would either go on and move to Mr. Brown again, but we have to be real careful what we're putting in this. And how you put it in there, you're gonna have to put it in there for me to support the council to where I know, yeah, we can back that, and Mr. Garganese is gonna have to tell you, yeah, you can defend that. But to put something in there and just mandate it, you better be ready to defend it. I'll back whatever the majority wants. I know what I got. Mr. Brown, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. A valuable point is, where are we gonna be in two months? With this encouragement resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen, I guarantee that in two months, our numbers are gonna explode. I mean, this encouragement is good. It looks good on paper, but is it effective? No, it's not effective. Another thing, I worked for the state of Florida for years, and I was told, do not be afraid to do your job in fear of getting sued. And I had contact with over probably a half million people. And I was never in fear of doing my job based on what might happen. I have faith in our attorney that he could write up a proposal that would put some mandates in question. And that question for you, Anthony, are there lawsuits out there because cities have not protected their citizens? Is my question for you.
Now, the lawsuits that I'm aware of are just require face coverings. That the local government agency is taking steps to try to protect the citizen at large. The plaintiffs that are filing the lawsuits are challenging the imposition of face masks on them. And as the councilman indicated earlier, some of the arguments are right to privacy, due process, equal protection, vague, vagueness, so.
So basically, what I'm asking you is, there is the possibility that there could be lawsuits for the city not protecting their citizens in cases of requirements of masks. Am I correct or am I not correct?
I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any lawsuits attempting to compel a city to require their citizens to wear face masks.
No, that's not my, I'm asking you is, are there any lawsuits that have come for the failure of the city to protect their citizens by people not wearing masks? That's the question I'm asking. And is that a possibility also?
Anything's possible, but I'd, in a lawsuit, on a lawsuit, but I would think it'd be highly unlikely somebody could compel or sue the city because they have not imposed a face covering requirement.
No, what I'm saying is that they run the impression they caught the COVID for the lack of the city taking up and not protecting them is what I'm trying to say.
I think that would be an extremely challenging lawsuit for somebody to bring against the city.
Well, I have faith in that the city and our council, if needed, could draw up something that would mandate and we'd be able to enforce. And with your abilities, I believe that we could defer. There's always gonna be the case of somebody wanting to sue somebody. You can't deny that. There's always gonna be that. But I think that we could draw up a mandate, and it looks like it's almost, there's no gray area. We have two councilpeople that don't want mandates, and we have two that want, and I guess the mayor is the deciding vote. But I am adamant that we need something besides encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with Cocoa Beach and Satellite Beach. And I think we need to be consistent, especially with Cocoa Beach. We're so close. I think that we need to do more than encourage people to wear a face mask indoor public locations. And I think it's very important for everyone to understand this. This is very serious. It's a pandemic. It's something that we have never experienced in our lifetime. And I think that we need to just do the best that we can as leaders. And I think we need to be consistent and be with Cocoa Beach and Satellite Beach. And we need to show that solidarity. It's very important. And we could take a look at their law, it wasn't a law. I think that they made a resolution, or perhaps they called it an emergency measure. And I think, excuse me, it was called an emergency order by the city of Cocoa Beach. I have the newspaper in front of me. I just think that it's a necessary thing that we do. This shows that we're responsible, that we care about our residents, that we think that their health and safety and security is our number one priority. And I feel that it's very important. And as far as fines go, you're not gonna catch everyone. Like, you don't catch everyone going sixty miles per hour on A1A. And I think that we just need to have some type of, maybe a minimal type of a fine. It doesn't have to be five hundred dollars. It doesn't have to be a third time, first time, second time. But to say that it's a very serious offense, that we feel that's a very serious offense, it's offensive. Of course, we have everything in this already stating that children under two years old do not need to wear a mask. People who have COPD or emphysema. And there are the exceptions to the rule. Those are already stated here. It's not that you have to explain to people in public why you're not wearing a mask. When I see people that don't wear a mask, I assume that there's something wrong with that person. And I think this is the responsible thing to do. And I think that responsible adults do the right thing. And this is what we need to do. We need to give it at least a little bit of teeth, maybe baby teeth. Maybe baby teeth. But we do need to give it a little more teeth. Thank you.
Council, our resolution and the resolution of Cocoa Beach is basically the same. Except for the word approved, I mean, a word encouraging. And then in theirs, it's mandated that they wear it. Has no penalty clause. But it gives exceptions to the people that don't have to wear it, basically the same ones that we have listed in ours. No penalty clause. Well, I'm saying, you know, what we have is supportable to me, what we wrote. What they wrote is supportable to me, but when you start mandating, I'll support a mandated one, but you better be real careful of what you put it in and how you do it. You put a penalty on it, then you're gonna mandate a penalty. You're mandating people to wear a mask, you're gonna have people object to that. There's already people objecting to Cocoa Beach's band-aid. And there's other ones I haven't really heard from Satellite Beach people, but I know I've heard a lot of Cocoa Beach people that aren't wearing their mask. I got people in Cape Canaveral that told me they won't wear it if we put this in. So all it is is self-governing, basically. Are we gonna do something if we pass this tonight? What is your, what is your take on, if we pass this tonight, it gets voted in? Is that what you want? Are you happy with what you have? Council? I mean, there's no mandate that says encourage. That's what we're working tonight. It has no penalties. If you mandate, then you're gonna need penalties. And then how you gonna enforce it? So we either go back to the drawing board another couple days, three days, or whatever it takes, Mr. Garganese, to change all this, to mandate what you want, and then you're gonna have it before you again. Or do you want to pass this tonight and be happy with what this is and go from there? Because I hear four different opinions, two to two, basically, but four different opinions spread over this whole thing. And I'm happy with what you have here. I think, start with that because you can make all the laws you want, and people aren't gonna abide by all of them. But now you got to go after them and enforce that law. There's no enforcement teeth in this. There's no penalty in this. If you put it in there, they're gonna do it anyway. So now here you go. Then you're gonna start getting the lawsuits back at you. Because there's people out there that aren't gonna wear it, and they'll sue you not to wear it. I had one person bend in my ear to where it burns, because he isn't gonna wear his mask. I wear mine only when I have to. I wear, I stay at home as much as I can. I only go out when I have to, and the places that I go into, I put it on, and I'm out of there before I got in there. So that's the way I am. Because I'm of that age where I don't need to be out there. But now it's the other trend. Younger kids, twenty-four to thirty-five are getting it. And that tells you a story of what happened when they opened up the bars and the places for kids to hang out. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my decision after. We'll go back through again. I've I've come here with a decision, but everybody's kind of throwing things out on the table that, well, if you want to do that, I'll support it, but you got to show me how you're gonna support it, and how you're gonna, how you're gonna make it work. But I've already had a decision before I come to the meeting, but I'm hearing a lot of different things. But there's a lot of things in ours a little more explainable than in Cocoa Beach. Cocoa Beach is almost the same as yours, except for theirs is declaring that you must wear that mask. You hear you're saying you're encouraging it. So it's the same, other than we got definitions for the people, and there is some items that are covered, like outdoor activities. They tell you a little bit about that, but we're into it a little bit, a little heavier, you might say, on the explanation. So if somebody else wants to, Ms. Kellum, are you raising your hand?
Yes, sir.
Go again.
I just wanted to ask a couple questions and then to Mayor Pro Tem Brown, how would you enforce this? And in this, where we are right now with the COVID and everybody, people being laid off of work and laid off again, and I think if you mandate it, it's just gonna make people angry and that are already angry about everything that's happening. And then you're gonna have people shaming other people for not wearing masks. I think, like Mayor Hoag said, you know, he wears it when he has to, when he's in, he is governing himself, and that's what we all. He is governing himself and that's what we all need to do. And as a city, I thought this resolution would be good because we are being leaders and encouraging people to govern themselves, stay at home when possible. You know, follow CDC recommendations. I don't see, it's just going to make people more divisive if we mandated it than it than what's already happening. And my other thing was um that can, you know, Ms. Raymond says, you know, Cocoa Beach and Satellite Beach, the commissioners there have already stated that it's unenforceable, their mandate. So I I don't see, when you put the word in there, it makes people angry. I agree with um Mr. Morrison, you know, maybe this is a waste of time. I I I I think it's a statement from the city and the council that we are encouraging people to do the right thing. And then Mr. Brown, you know, how would you, what fine would you have? How would you enforce it? Are we going to send the code enforcement officers out to enforce this? I I just would like to see what your thoughts are on that.
Okay. Well, in in a perfect world, this resolution would be fine. But we're dealing with people that have no respect for other people, no respect for other people's lives. We know what's about social distancing. We know the ramifications of not wearing masks. There's people out there that don't don't care. Those are the people that I'm concerned with. You talk about liberties and all this. What about lives? We talked about what about people's lives? That's what my main concern is. What about people's lives? Encouragement is not working. We see the CDC recommendations and they have been in place for a long time. And we've we have surges. Look at the surge now. We've got a record amount of deaths in Brevard County today. We're still under CDC recommendations. So my point, we can iron out something as far as what the penalties need to be. But by doing nothing, we're not, by doing nothing, we're not supporting our citizens. We're not supporting our safety. Safety first, always. Safety first. Thank you. To Mr. Raymond. Ms. Raymond. Back to you, Morris.
I like the idea that Cocoa Beach took and they decided that they would put the emergency order on the doors of Cocoa Beach indoor businesses that masks would be required at that point. Uh, I also like what Mike Miller said. Mike was the president of Space Coast League of Cities last year. And he said people need to take responsibility for not infecting other people. Because we know that you could be infected even if you're asymptomatic. And I think that's the part has got, that has really got a lot of people freaked out. I do think we need to stay calm. I think that we need to stay at home as much as possible. I believe that we need to continue to be out in the fresh air exercise. I was at the beach for a couple of hours this afternoon on our paradise and our beautiful island here. And I believe that we need to take responsibility for each other. I want to do the best that I possibly can for the residents of Cape Canaveral. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, as far as the whole lawsuit, just want to go back to comment. Mayor Pro Tim Brown, he said, don't do your job in fear of getting sued. What I'm saying is uh they also told you to not break the law. We all put our right hand up and we said, we'll, and Anthony stood in front of all of us, I believe, and and said uphold the constitution of the US, Florida constitution and our charter. And what I believe is that, and you heard our our city attorney say, eleven lawsuits. And and I'd like to hear from Anthony, it's really difficult to write a mandate because it's illegal. You, in my opinion, and I think Anthony would can can opine on that, but when you look at Cocoa Beaches, that one word, yes, it's one word, but one word can can put us down a road we don't want to go. And so I think that the reason, it's not fear of getting sued, it's fear of breaking the law. And yes, to say that it shows that we care means that by not doing anything as far as requiring people to put face masks on means that we don't care. That's not right. One of us care. We just have different paths on how to get to the same end result. And there's no bad people up here. There's no people that don't care. We just have to figure out a way to promote through persuasion. And this, to me, this resolution, because it does have a chance, I would agree with some of the reason, and I don't have the, I think that the time I wasn't given in enough time and but it really be for Anthony, when we go through this and you cross-reference that the St. Augustine, they're using the same language, this this document, because I agree with you, is being floated around. The exceptions are the same. They they're calling out these articles, and I know that it says encourage, but there's words in here that I see how an attorney could get it twisted. And Anthony obviously wouldn't put anything out. He didn't feel comfortable. But Anthony was hard pressed to get this out in short notice too, in defense of him. He wasn't given a lot of time. And I don't know if he had this ready, but I know time is helpful. So if we're going to do this, I would support it, but it does need some changes, in my opinion, or I would have an opportunity to sit down with Anthony and work with him one-on-one. But we didn't really have a chance to call staff prior on this one. And so if I could have that, that would be great, but I really need to read through it. I can send in my marked up copy, but when it talks about the the things that we see in the St. Augustine, I want to send this copy to Anthony to look at it and see, are these points valid or not? I think some of them are valid. So what I'm saying is while the chance is slim, it's just not, I don't think compliance is going to increase a lot. I think if we actually take our energy and we say let's keep encouraging Todd and our team to go out and promote face masks and to get signs on every businesses, not require it. We can go right now. The county just released theirs. You can get those to all of our business. That's going to make a big difference. But to put it in a resolution, it doesn't change behavior. It I really don't think this changes behavior. I'm unified with all of you. We should be wearing face masks. Good. But not must. That's that's wrong. Um, inconsistency with Cocoa Beach, no, it's consistency with the county. And and even our own uh the product or the resolution said consistent with the city. I remember where it said here, it said, that was another question. It talked about being um whereas the city's comprehensive emergency management plan in chapter and chapter two fifty-two of Florida statutes, the city's comprehensive emergency management plan should be consistent with the county. And that's not mentioned in here. It's not, we're not consistent with Cocoa Beach. It's with the county and it's with the state of Florida. The state of Florida did not put in their plan from the governor's office that we should, we must wear face masks. He didn't even put in his getting back phase two that face masks are recommended. Why? Because the medical experts are communicating this. And for us to sit over here and go, yeah, well, the CDC guidelines, whatever, we need law. That's the only way. No, the CDC guidelines are working. People are doing this. And remember, if Cape Canaveral is so good at social distancing, which we said, you don't need face masks anyways. But when I go into Publix and I'm out, I do see the majority of the people trying to be respectful of face. And so I know the feeling like we got to do something. The forty-four, excellent point by Councilwoman McKellen, that's cumulative. The six deaths, again, we were elected to represent the jurisdictions of Cape Canaveral. Those six deaths, I haven't seen anything in Cape Canaveral. Our deaths are zero here. And the people are getting younger. Hospitalizations, I think, will tick up a little bit. I was talking with Zach about this in lag. I agree with him. And I think deaths might. But if, but if you look at this, we did this to flatten the curve. Health First just came out today and said, we got your back, Brevard. We've got plenty of beds. We've got, remember, it was to never overwhelm the healthcare system. What they're saying is, is the people who are likely to die from this, Health First is there. They're starting to figure out. They've learned so much. If you read their post, they said, we've learned so much from when when this first started. We all as citizens learn too. So we're getting better at how to deal with this virus. And yes, the younger crowd is going to go out and act like that, but but for me, I stay away from them. I'm thirty-seven, by the way, so I don't know, maybe I'm still the college age, younger twenties, eighteen, if that's what we're calling age, yes. And you know why they act like that? Because, and that's not all of them. There's some, um, I know a lot of young teenagers and college kids who are being very respectful. But the the spring breakers, which is was another big concern when this all started. It was all about spring break. That's not here. When these people go out, we stay away from them. And you can't trace that virus on how it gets back to Mayor Hoag if Mayor Hoag's doing, as he just said, what he's staying away from everybody. These young people aren't running up and hugging Mayor Hoag. And so that that's the logic about just behavior. But for us to come down with a hard hammer, I would I would not support that. I would support having a chance to go back in and to work through these issues and and ask questions. But Anthony, my question to you is, would you write an ordinance like Cocoa Beach just wrote? I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. I mean, would you recommend that that we go down that path with the eleven other cities? That's my question. And I
Yeah, I haven't, I I have not, I don't believe I've seen Cocoa Beaches. That's what I was trying to inject earlier on. Um, I I I haven't seen it, so I don't know what they've done. I suspect it wasn't even done by the commission itself. It was in a another one of those administrative emergency orders. Um, but you know, there, again, this resolution is not intended to be a mandate. I would not have drafted it in the way that it's currently stated if um if this was a mandate. Um, I would, I would take probably a more, far more circumspect view on the uh findings and the exceptions that are stated. You know, some of the lawsuits that are out there, regardless of what's written on the paper or the requirement, it's based on a scientific argument. The scientific argument that the lawyers are making goes something like uh the United States government doesn't mandate masks. The Florida state of Florida doesn't mandate masks. Um, there's no scientific evidence that the masks actually like the home, especially the homemade masks, actually prevent the transmission of the of the disease. And there are health consequences for even healthy people that when they wear the masks, it deprives them of oxygen somewhat. And that could be potentially harmful to people for some other reason. So you know, the, I'm just being very general, but there are scientific arguments being made in these lawsuits to argue that there's no real legitimate government purpose supporting the imposition of a mask mandate. Where those lawsuits come down at the end of the day, I don't know. I think the closest case I can think of off the my, off the top of my mind, that's actually mandated something like this is like the immunization cases years ago from the United States Supreme Court that were based on scientific data supporting that the immunizations actually provide help and a health benefit to the individuals being immunized. Where we end at the end of the day with homemade face coverings, I I regarding COVID nineteen, I can't tell you. I'm not a doctor.
Anthony, I have a question for you while you're on. Um
Yeah, sure.
Can you, as far as a business, if I have a business and the city comes and says that I'm not allowed to operate my business unless everyone in there comes in with a mask, is that something we could get sued over too?
Mandating that a business require?
Yeah, that that no one can come in the business unless there, if the city goes to the business and says you cannot operate your business unless everyone is wearing a mask.
Well, that's an, that's an imposition on the business.
Right. And that's something we could get sued over, right?
Uh, certainly. Um, you know, some business may object to having that imposed.
Right.
Um, you know, I I can't predict how businesses would react to such an imposition. I think some would say, yeah, fine, I'm already doing it anyway. Some may say, no, I'm not going to.
Right.
Some may say, you know, your regulation, you know, I'm a restaurant and you man, you got to, you got to mandate and the mandate is not narrowly tailored and you're requiring patrons to wear a mask in my business and they can't eat and drink through a mask. I mean, I it depends on how you write the document.
Right.
Right?
And so I think that what we have in our resolution where we put, that we recommend businesses put a written notice on the door is more, and we're not demanding, we're recommending. And once they get inside the door, they can take it off anyway. I think that covers and keeps us out of trouble with businesses, right?
I, from the, from a legal perspective, I look at it as you're either going to mandate it or you're going to encourage or urge in a non-binding way. I mean, that's the threshold. And that's how I look at it. You know, the man, what whatever you mandate, whether it's face coverings, notices to the businesses or whatever, is mandated. In my legal mind and and analysis, that's so much different than the council just making a public statement encouraging or urging the public to do something because the public doesn't have to do it. All this, it's non-binding. It's just, it's it's a, it's just a statement of 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 the council.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. Um, Anthony.
Yes, sir.
To me, it seems like you're getting a bunch of what they call in court, a bunch of leading questions. Um, you're, um, they know the response they want you to give. But until the courts have come out and ruled, all we're doing is talking about pure speculation. Is that correct?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, um, yes, because I don't have any knowledge of a final court decision on a face covering mandate in Florida, at the very least. I don't, I don't, I couldn't tell you. So, yeah, so I'm talking about these issues, just so I'm clear. Yeah, I'm just kind of issue spotting and just telling you with some of the arguments, legal arguments that are out there. Um, you know, the there are, there are arguments for as well, right? Um, you know, that cities have home rule authority to impose these types of mandates um with regarding public health safety when there's a health declaration of emergency that's been declared by the United States government and the state of Florida. So
Yeah, my question to you is that you haven't come out and stated those um those reasons, you you just basically being one-sided when asked a question. You should have come out and said, hey, you know, there's, there's no, there has been no case law stating what, you know, what they're recommending or opposing or presenting. And I think that you should be a little bit more impartial in your comeback and your statements because there there is no case law. It's all pure speculation until somebody rules.
So I mean, I'm, I'm trying to be impartial. I'm trying to answer the question that's asked, but there's both sides. It's two, it's a two-headed coin, you know, there are two sides, two ar, two sets of arguments. I can't predict where this is going to come down because there's no legal precedent that that I'm aware of in the state of Florida that would guide me to some strong or weak conclusion on on these these documents that are, these mandates. I can tell you that just from a general constitutional sense, um, some of the mandates are vague and ambiguous in my mind. Some of the mandates are I think not narrowly tailored and actually in some circumstances cause more harm than good to some people that really to some people that really should not be mandated, you know, where it's mandated that they wear a, a, a mask. That's why you have a list of exceptions.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to just say one thing that, uh, restaurants, I know Mickey was, and Wes, Wes, restaurants, restaurants are mandated to wear masks, the people serving and the waitresses, so forth, the employees by the health department. They're also mandated to sanitize after the people leave, the tables, the menus, whatever, whatever they're on the ketchup bottles, whatever's on the table, they sanitize. That's all mandated by the health department. Now, the restaurant people aren't happy with it, but they have to do it because that's being taken care of by the state, not us. The, what the, what the resolutions are asking the people, the people, the pa, the patrons are gonna go in there. You can walk in with your mask, you sit down, then you can take your mask off when you eat. It's also geared towards the vendors that come in there. The vendors that go into those restaurants, the guy may be delivering soda pop or whatever he's, he's gotta have a mask on by state and mandate to that restaurant. By that restaurant, all the employees are in there with masks. You go in and see them. I understand there's some that don't wear it. And then the people that are in there, I was in one restaurant where they didn't have the mask on. The owner was walking around, he got, he got his backside chewed out a little bit for not having his mask on by the customers, so that's happened. But I, we can get into this mandate and mandate and mandate and you're gonna have problems whether you mandate it or whether you don't. And I, Coco, like I said, Cocoa Beach has gotta go in, except for that one word. Ours, I think, is good, uh, unless we put mandates on it, you better be ready to do the mandates. And, and, uh, case law, yeah, right, there isn't any case law because this is something that just come out. So, and I'm pretty sure where the case law is gonna go when it does come out. I would almost bet my bippy that you aren't gonna be able to back that mandate. Uh, that's just the way I look at it because the whole state of Florida is not mandating. The governor's smart enough not to mandate it. I would think he's already got that in his back pocket, what's gonna happen, but. I, uh, I would like, well, go ahead and just move on. I just trying to answer some comments as I can because I've written, written a lot of it down. Some of it's already been discussed. I told you, I don't wanna go over it again, but, uh, Mickey, I mean Angela, I'm sorry, Angela. Mickey, are you, you were raised?
I just wanna make a quick, I just wanna make a quick statement. Remember about home rule? Home, the government that is closest to the people is your local government. I just wanna mention that as something we need to think about. And maybe it is time to go ahead and vote. Uh, otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels once again. So maybe it's just time to vote on this and make a decision. You either want this resolution or you don't. Come on now, let's make a decision on this. If you don't want it, that's fine. It sounds like people have already made up their minds.
When I came here, I, I've already, I, I've, I know all the cities, the mayors have all been talking on the computer. Uh, Cocoa Beach, just to bring one subject back about Cocoa Beach. The commission, the commission voted their resolution, three to two. It passed as written and Mr. McKnight sent it out. So that was, there was a question there about whether who did Cocoa Beaches. Mayor Malik, Mike Miller, and, uh, Get Miller voted for. And the lady Knowles or whatever her name is, and Hernandez voted against it. That was Cocoa Beach. Okay, if, uh, Mickey, you got your hand up again. Go ahead. And Wes, okay, let Mickey go.
I just have, uh, one question to, uh, Councilman Morrison. Is there something we can tweak on this right now and, and get it passed if you agree? If you agree with it and, um, I know there's people that don't agree with it. Um, I, I'm ready to, I think it's a good thing. It can't hurt. It's, um, we're making a statement, we're encouraging people. And I agree, you know, if you think there's places that we can tweak right now and get it to where you're happy with it. Um, or do we need to let it die? Wait, I don't know.
What I think is, that's, that's all I wanted to say. I'm glad we're getting two birds with one stone. I'm answering your question and, and saying, um, you know, if we pass it as written tonight, I don't see how the, 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 the great impact that this is gonna have and change people's behavior between now and the next weeks. And I think that Mayor Pro Tim Brown and, and Councilmember Raymond agree with me on that. It, this isn't gonna be effective. And so what I do think though is, the risk is, is if we pass it, then there is a slight chance in that, that this could be, have some conflict in it and that it could be twisted. And I would like the opportunity to, to work through these issues. I don't see, just due to the shortness of time we were given, getting these done tonight. I've got some pretty deep questions and you, you know that we've already said this at a previous meeting. You would rather me do those one-on-one with council. And so until I'm comfortable with it, I can't support it the way it's written. I've got, I just got a pro, I, I read through this one time and I marked it up and I, and I, and I don't even know how to to, to word all my questions, but I'm cross-referencing the St. Augustine lawsuit. And so I'm taking, and I see the similarities and I'm saying, could that get twisted? And, and I think Anthony would be very helpful if I could meet with him. Um, for, for twenty, thirty minutes to go over this um, before I would approve it tonight or be voting support. But if we wanted to postpone it and put it on the next council meeting agenda, that would give me plenty of time to come out and to, to be either in support or against this because, yeah, I'd have time to, to go through it. And so that's where I am. I would seriously consider it if we brought it back then, but tonight I just, I don't see how I'm gonna get through all these issues that, with the article, um, nine, with due process, the right to privacy, why we don't have the county in here, why are we essentially allowing police officers in first response? Why aren't we encouraging them? It's, it's minutious stuff that when you add it all and package it, 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 it just doesn't seem worth it to me. Um, that's where I am. And so I can make it worth it. I can, I can get comfortable with this. I just need, if I have till the next council meeting, um, I think that would be my motion is that we postpone it to that, but that is not, that's, that's what I'm in support of doing, um, tonight. Cause I agree with Councilmember Raymond, it, we do need to make a decision. I mean, it.
Right. Well, then what do you suggest Mayor Hoag that we do? Do you let it go until we can, I mean, to the next council meeting?
You got a resolution before you tonight. You either accept it or you, you put a motion out to accept it or you put a motion out to deny it. And not accept it and then vote on it, but.
Motion to postpone it.
You can put it on a table.
Procedurally, you could have a motion to postpone until, um, it's regular meeting if you wanted to do that.
Somebody has to do that motion.
Yeah, it's a motion. Motion not substantive on the merits of the resolution.
Right, I understand. But I'm saying we get, we got a resolution, either pass or deny, or you got a table. You can table it until next meeting or you have to do something. Well, I think we ought to vote on the motion. I think we ought to vote on the motion that's in place.
Well, then nobody's got a motion. There's no motion.
Well, I mean, the resolution in place.
Nobody has a motion. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
He wants to move and do something, but you gotta do, either put a resolu, put a, put a motion out to accept the resolution.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty seventeen be denied.
I second it. I, I second it.
So now we can discuss, Mr. Mayor, is that right? You're muted, Mr. Mayor. Is something on my issue on my end?
Okay, we have a motion. I was muted all the time, I guess. Nobody knew what I was saying. Okay, we have a motion to deny the resolution on a second. We're open for discussion. Other discussion, Morrison.
Yes, I would like to just say, I don't recommend that we deny this tonight. Um, and, and Councilmember Callum, I think, and I, I, we can get this, but I also don't recommend that we approve it. And so I think that if, if we can consider getting this uh, or postponing it, I think that's gonna be the best path forward. And so now if we're gonna be forced into a vote as a tactic to, to just kill this, I will exercise my power at the next meeting and ask that we put this on the next agenda. So if this gets killed tonight, because now we're gonna take up a vote, I will, I will move that we do an add-on agenda item. And if you second that at the next meeting, Councilmember Callum and Mayor and, you know, we can bring this back in another way. I feel like we're kinda stuck right now on a path and now we're gonna go and dive off a cliff because I'm not gonna support it the way it's written, the way that the motion Mayor Pro Tim Brown just did. That's not right. So when I vote against this, if we have to go down that path, um, I'm telling you that I will move that we, we get it back on the next agenda, if you're willing at that meeting. If that's allowed, Anthony, if there's anything out of line, please tell me.
Okay, when I, I would ask that, um, Councilman Morrison, are you saying that, that you are not willing to find a resolution that has a little bit more teeth in it? And I'd be willing to support that. If you're saying that you can't do that, I don't like the word that you use tactic. It wasn't a tactic. I'm looking for something a little bit stronger. Thank you.
If, the question is, do, would I consider something with more teeth in it? Absolutely not. So, no, I, I, there's a reason the governor, you said it, Mayor, he's smart. He didn't mandate it. I wanna be smart in Cape Canaveral too. I don't wanna mandate. I think that's illegal. I think that it's not worth it to go down that path. We are going to win this virus and we're gonna respect liberty, life and property all at the same time. And that's where I think we can go. So Anthony, if, are we stuck? I mean, we now gonna have to take up a vote. I'm not gonna support this. Sounds like Mayor Pro Tim Brown and Councilmember Callum. Loses, it, we basically go to the next agenda item, right? Um, but is there a way to resurrect this or do I just have to add it on at the next council meeting or give it that a shot?
Um, there's a main motion on the floor and, um, even though there's a main motion on the floor, you could, I think you could procedurally, um, table, table the, the motion. Um, I, I don't know if you can have a motion to postpone. I gotta take a quick look um, when there's a main motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I had as far as comments. I just, I want, I want to, I wanna get this, have some time to work through the kinks and get it passed to make a statement, which is what the original intent was. And so I'm just asking for a little bit more time and I.
And procedurally too, you can also vote on the motion and then nothing prevents the, the, um, the council from, um,
Bring it back.
Another motion on the floor.
Okay.
So understandably, so everybody understands if this motion was, the, the motion was made to accept or to deny the resolution by Mr. Brown and seconded. So it's, the motion on the floor is to deny this resolution. So for this to come back to us, it can be denied or it could be voted, uh, for the motion and bring it back. Could it not, Anthony? Is that what you said?
Yeah, the motion can be denied and then another motion can be made to postpone, um, consideration of the resolution at the next meeting. That would be permissible.
So, Mr. Brown made a motion to deny this resolution, but to bring it back at the next meeting, it would have to be voted in favor of the resolution? Bring it back, correct?
No, it'd just be another mo, it'd be, i- i- if you voted this motion and, um, you know, you could, the council can make a new motion on the resolution to postpone it to the next meeting if you desire.
Okay, we would need a new resol, we would need, we would need a new motion to bring it back.
A new motion, right. Right now you have the motion on the floor. You have a motion in a second, so it either has to be voted or, or, or tabled.
Yeah, but the motion, if we vote a denial, we would be voting for the resolution, correct?
Right, that was my question. You nailed it. It, so I, I, I don't.
You would be voting not to re, not to reject it.
Well, that ain't the way the motion was made. Mr. Brown made the motion to deny this resolution.
Right.
Not accept, not accept that resolution is what I make the motion for, to deny the resolution as written.
Okay, well, that's denying the resolution. Now, if we, if we call the roll and, and we vote for denial, that makes the resolution go away. And if you vote for the resolution, that means the resolution is accepted as written. Correct?
No, that wouldn't mean that. First, the, the dilemma you're in is that there's, it's a negative motion on the floor. Those, those are very difficult to deal with. Okay?
So I can see that. That's why I'm trying to get through it.
Yeah, usually, the, the motion should be in the, the, some sort of affirmative, otherwise we get into these mental, mental gymnastics to trying to figure it out. But I understand the motion. The councilman does not support this resolution. He wants something stronger. So he doesn't support this resolution. Another council member has seconded that motion. So if you all vote and, you know, majority of you say you don't accept this resolution, this resolution dies.
Okay.
And but the council can always provide different direction in a new motion.
Okay, so it's the way the wording of the, of the motion was made. To deny this and, and it doesn't have any effect on the motion other than make it go away.
Like it, right. Well, if the motion fails for, for lack of a majority vote, then again, you're in a position of you, you, you can make another motion.
Okay, so here's what I can do. I will not support, I was gonna vote in favor of Mayor Pro Tim Brown and Councilmember Callum, or, uh, Councilmember Raymond. I'm not gonna support it now because it's a negative motion. And so I, I can vote in favor with, uh, I can vote against his motion. And then it'll come back alive. I, the mayor, you said it best. I thought that by voting against, it meant that I was for it as written. And that's.
That's normally the way things go.
Yeah, I.
But it was the way that it was worded, the, the, the motion. Just to deny the resolution, not supported or denied.
Yeah, so I'm not support the, the motion on the table. That's my discussion on it. Thank you. And Mayor Pro Tim Brown can rescind it too and make our lives easy.
I'm just wanting everybody to understand when you vote, Mr. Brown's motion was to deny this resolution.
So if we call the question. As far as Resolution twenty seventeen, um, that we make, I make a, a motion that we do not accept the resolution as written. Is that better?
The same, basically.
So therefore, if you, if you want this motion to, or if you want this to get passed as written, you would vote against Mayor Pro Tim Brown's.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
In my book, that's what normally happens with this stuff. But Mr. Garganese sees a different light on it that I can't quite wrap my arms around yet.
No, what I'm saying though is, it is, if, if, if we vote against this, then a new motion.
Vote against the motion. Vote against the. Vote against the motion, not this. The motion is the thing.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm ready if everybody else is.
He made a motion to not accept this resolution as written. He come back with another clarification to his motion. Uh, if you vote not to accept Mr. Brown's motion, in my book, that means you're accepting the resolution.
No.
No, that's, no, that's not. And then the, the, the original motion stands because you had a second. So the original motion was to reject it. And I believe, I believe that's what the word was and there was a second.
Right. Okay. So you vote to accept the denial, would the resolution would die?
And it had to come back on another motion.
If, yeah, if you accept the rejection by majority vote, again, I think the council can make another motion if you desire. But I can see where, where the mayor's going. If you accept the, the motion to reject the resolution, then that means the resolution dies.
Right. Period. Come back with a complete new resolution or some changes or whatever. Angela?
Mayor Pro Tim's motion was to deny Resolution Number 202017. That was his motion and I seconded it.
I understand that.
Thank you.
So the way this goes, I'm going to vote against that. And then if two other people agree with me to vote against it, then we will get, it will still be alive, but it does not mean that we are approving it. Which we will then have a new motion on the table, so.
What I wanted everybody to understand, that you're going to get a new resolution if you deny this one.
I'm ready.
Not going to get this resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody through? Call the roll.
Mayor, this is Todd. Before we go there, we need to go to Molly for public comment.
I'm, I'm sorry, we got pu- uh, public in this one. I forgot. I'm sorry. Uh, yes, Molly. Do you have any hands?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Did you have any hands?
Not at all, not through this entire proceeding.
Okay. Bring it back to the dais and we will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
For.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Okay, the motion was to deny this resolution and now we don't have a resolution. So we have to embark on the attorney to come up with something different. And I don't know what that'll be.
I, I think that Mayor Pro Tim or Mayor, I mean, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brown or Angela Raymond need to bring up the resolution that they want. Uh, they had all the ideas on how it needs to be mandated, so.
I think, I think we had something that would have, would have worked as far as what we're going to come up with because I, I can see you got a 50/50 deal on this throughout the whole country. And I, I'm, at, at least you would have had, we'd have had something that was encouraging our people to follow the guidelines, follow the guidelines of CDC and now you don't have. And you're going to come up with something that they're going to follow anyway. And then how are you going to enforce it? How are you going to find what you're going to do? And I think you're putting a big imposition onto city staff. But if you people got an idea of what you want to do,
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to speak for Todd, but, uh, let me offer the suggestion. Um, I mean, the council has had this vigorous debate on this issue. And you're all together. And so we can efficiently use everybody's time. Please give us direction on what you would like to see, if anything further on this issue. Because you are together as a governing body. Todd, the staff, myself, we all take direction from you. Tell us what to do, please.
I was happy with what we had to appoint and, but.
Well, shouldn't the people that deny this resolution come up with another, or are we not going to do anything for our citizens?
Well, I think, I think that we're close. But I think there's something, um, maybe a stronger word than encouragement can be put into play, but maybe not even put in mandate or requirement. Encouragement to me is hope, is, is hope and a desire. We need something stronger than a hope and desire to go ahead and get people to see this is serious. I know that most people believe this is serious, but we need something, a stronger message to our citizens. And I think we can find some words that will have more of an impact than the word encouragement.
So are you directing staff to come up with another resolution?
Well, I think this resolu- resolution we have in place right now isn't far off. But the word encouragement, I think we need some tougher, some tougher words that will put that this is serious. Encouragement is just leaving, it's, it's out there and it's not strong enough, in my opinion. And I think that we can do something, put something in place if that, if short of mandate, that shows how serious we are and what we need to do.
Anthony is.
You have any suggestions, Mike, with what you're saying? I mean, encouraging, you can, you can put encouraging with, with something there, but I don't know what you're going to encourage with.
Yeah, we've been encouraging all these years. CDC recommendations are encouraging. And they're not, and they're basically not working. You see the surge and everything. We need something stronger than the word encouragement to go ahead and, and pass on.
You mean you're talking about that word encouraging? Take it out and put something like, follow the guidelines of CDC? Is that what you're?
Well, I'm just, I'm just using that as we have the word recommenda- encouraging already in place and a lot of the CDC guidelines.
Yeah, it's all there already. It's in there. That's why, I don't know where you're coming from with the word.
What I'm trying to say is, it's not a strong enough message. It's not a strong enough, um, resolution. If you can find something else that makes it a little bit stronger than encouraging, I might be willing to, but I don't, right now, I don't know words, but since we're not going to agree on mandates and requirements, we need something a little bit stronger.
Does Todd have a recommendation on a word that isn't encourage and isn't mandate?
This is a difference. This, this is Todd. I mean, ultimately you're either enforcing or you're not enforcing. And there's a clear line between that. And the word encourage is on one side of that and the word mandate is on the other side of that. And I don't think we're going to be able to get an agreement here. So, uh, perhaps we might take another approach here. Perhaps we could, uh, we could ask for citizen and business ambassadors to help us spread the word. Um, we're requesting the assistance of, you know, of, of ambassadorship from our citizens and from our businesses. Maybe that's where we could land on this.
Angela.
Nikki?
Angela.
Angela, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I keep calling her. Angela, I'm sorry.
How about directing our citizens? Is that too strong? And if you would allow me, would you allow me to just go to get my dictionary? And I think that I might be able to help right now.
That's up to the council. I, I'm here.
May I go get to the bookcase to get my dictionary? Does anybody like directing the citizen?
No.
I don't like that either.
Mandating, directing.
Yeah. What can?
It is.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this and bring this back at the next council meeting.
Uh, we've been, we've been two hours on this now. Our next council meeting, I don't know what's all on the agenda yet, but
Yeah.
This is something that's, kind of should be, I think, worked by itself, in my opinion. We've been two hours on it now. We can't come to an agreement on simple one word.
Well, if I, here's what I'm saying, is if I can get into this and have a little bit more time, I will be able to get my comments over. The rest of the council can do the same. Angela can go look at her dictionary. Mike can come up with a word, whatever. We can give, we, see, what we're suffering from is we didn't have enough time to do this. But, you know, i- and to me, we're not going to, I'm not going to support directing or mandating or anything. I agree with Todd. It's either encourage or mandate. And to me, I'm willing to bring this back, but I don't think we're going to figure it out tonight.
I don't know how you're going to figure out between mandate and encouraging. What's in between there? That's not going to be one way or the other.
There's issues that I have marked up in here that I need to do in a formal legal redline and get it over to, to Anthony. Um, that's what I would like to do. This, we just voted, it didn't pass. And so I thought that we could bring it back. That would give us all enough time to give our comments in. And.
I second Wes's motion to table it to the next meeting. Or maybe another special meeting.
Oh, come on.
Not voting to, to table it, uh, because there is a difference there. I am voting to postpone.
Oh, that's what I meant. Postpone, I'm sorry.
Well, that's what basically happened. We aren't going to solve this tonight. We've been two hours on one word when we haven't solved it. Plus Wes has got other issues with it, but uh, I, I, I guess we'll just have to go that route because we're not going to get to an agreement tonight. We got another issue to go through yet. Angela, you got something you want to say? And then we're going to.
Yes, I just have one more comment. This is why I don't really like these special meetings. I agree with Wes on this. I think if we have time, like he said, to chew over some of these issues and put them on when we have our monthly meeting and then we have time to think about these things, analyze, organize and figure out. So I really am not in favor of these quick two days or a day's notice on a special meeting. So I do want to get that out. I mean, when we have an emergency, like a hurricane, okay, I agree with that. However, this is, has gotten to be a bit much, I think. And I think this is one of the reasons why it seems like we're disorganized or whatever. But I do agree with Wes on this. We need more time on some of these issues. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I apply to that, just, and don't beat ourselves up, guys. We're all smart. We were given this 90 minutes before this meeting started. Our ordinances say that special meetings should be noticed, but it only says the agenda should be noticed. This agenda packet came out shortly after Anthony was doing the best he could with the short time. And so we really didn't even have 24 hours to read this resolution. I read through it one time and I'm, it take, you know, 24 hours would have been ideal. We were noticed within 24, but we weren't given this document until about 2:30 today. So, uh, just, we're not, and we're not debating over one word. We, we've, we've gotten to this point, which is kind of good if it really is one word. I think we're close. I would agree that if we get in this next meeting, we don't need to go back through all of our comments. We need to come in with our recommendations and take action and agree to, you know, if we can't figure something out in, in reasonable amount of time at the next meeting, no action. And so I know that we're scared that, oh God, if we bring this back up again, it's going to be another two hours. I don't think it's going to do that. I think we can agree to take quick action. But yeah, we might need to go back into our ordinances and say, no, the agenda pack, we have to give staff enough time to be respectful of them. That, that it's got to, and get staff's input. From the time of requesting a special meeting, if there's something like a resolution that has to be drafted, they have enough time to draft it. We need to have enough time to review it. Then we have our meeting.
I agree. I agree. I mean, I drafted this thing in a 24-hour times, timeframe. And I was in, I was in meetings from 2:00 to 10:00 o'clock last night. So it, it puts a lot of pressure on the staff to prepare these agendas on special meetings. So I echo that point. And I just want to speak up on that. Only because I'll be considering an ordinance regarding special meetings at the next regular meeting. And that, that's all I'll say about it.
And this is Todd, and I agree with everything Anthony just said.
Yep, it's kind of hard on you guys to do that. And I know, I, I didn't see it until maybe an hour before I got to this meeting because I printed it off the computer real quick. Daniel put it up there. I don't remember what time it was, but I just got back to the office and was getting ready for the meeting and saw this pop up. So yeah, I didn't have much time. I read it once, read it real quick again and kind of took Cocoa Beach's ordinance or resolution and kind of compared it to. I thought they're pretty close to the same, except for.
Right. And then in addition, just so you know, in addition, today I've been working with staff most of the morning on regular agenda items for your upcoming regular meeting because there's a deadline for that. So if you all want to take additional time to consider this and get all of your thoughts together and then present it at the next meeting, that'd be wonderful.
In the meantime, if you have ideas before then, please feel free to call me and we'll work through them.
So are we going to do this resolution readjustment at the next council meeting? Is that what staff wanting to do with council?
I, I.
I believe what we're saying is that, uh, what Councilmember Morrison said is that this could be an add-on item at that meeting if council would be, uh, agreeing to that. In the meantime, I do encourage you to each, uh, reach out to me directly and/or Anthony and/or we can do a three-way conference call and talk about the issues so that we're more prepared if we go that way at the next council meeting.
But what, what do we have, Todd? Do we have ample time for all this next meeting? Cause I, I got a feeling that we're going to be going through this again and not such a quick manner again. Because Mr. Morrison brought up a lot of issues. I can see that some of the issues are, are, uh, probably could really be new because the fire service, they do everything probably over and above what you're asking, what you're even thinking they do. First responders, I have family that work with their first responders. I have two sons in the fire service. I have a daughter, daughters-in-law in the fire service. They all, they don't need us to tell them what to do, believe it. Because especially, I don't tell them what to do. And I've been in fire service a long time. I don't need to tell them what to do. They're covered. So your point of going to first responders and telling them to wear a mask, I don't think you need to do that. We don't need to do it.
I'm just saying an attorney could come to us and sue us because it's not equal. That, I, I don't know. That's a, we just want to get, staff was, it's no one's fault that we didn't have enough time. It's our ordinances' fault. I think our policy is lacking. It's not specific enough. I mean, Daniel Rush, Anthony, everyone did it. You, you know, I think Councilmember Kellum called the meeting. She didn't do anything. She just called a meeting. But it, it just puts this 24-hour crunch and it's not realistic. So we need to make our ordinances better. Um, and there's more issues, Mayor. And I, and you know what might come after I read through this? I might change my mind and go, you know what? I actually agree with what the mayor said, but we're not being realistic. We got this thing at 2:30 today.
Right, I understand.
That's, that's all.
I'm pinpointing some of the issues that we, we all have discussed and I, I think that, you know, hopefully, I really, I don't have anything I want to go back to them with other than I hope it all works out well. But I, I find it very hard to mandate. I mean, I, I find that where you're going to bring yourself some problems, mandating. So encouraging and try to find another word if you so desire, but I don't think you're going to find something that would be better than the word to encourage somebody to do something.
And I don't mind the word encourage. I, I don't think I actually said that. So I want, I'm not debating that word. I think encourage is the word. My issues are in other places. So if we can bring this back, my motion is to postpone. I think Councilmember Kellum seconded it. We bring this back at this meeting, I will, I will hash it out. And again, I might come back and go, let's pass it as is. I love it. I just needed to sleep on it. Um, who knows? I don't think that's going to be the case, but Anthony will put out and, and Todd, I'll work with you absolutely on, there's a couple of questions. I've marked your name on, um, on the enforcement side. And so, um, or the, um, the communication side, sorry. So yeah, I, I'm ready to, to, to not debate the word encouragement. I just want to make that clear. That's not the. So yeah, I, I'm ready to, to, to not debate the word encouragement. I just want to make that clear. That's not the issue for me.
All right, anybody else before we close, before we move to our next item? Okay, so we'll be seeing this on our next agenda, correct?
Gotta take the vote, the role.
Vote on the motion to postpone.
Right, I will, but I'm saying that we got room for it on our next agenda. That's the only question I'm asking before we go. Staff?
Yeah, I don't.
We can, um, all, all I can say is we could try, but I think what's more important is do we have, will we have something very substantive at that time that we don't need to debate at great length? Uh, and we'll find that out between now and then.
That's like, okay, call the roll for putting it on to the next meeting.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, that closes that item, and, uh, our next item is discussing and regarding the closing to City Hall and the Nancy Hansen recreational complex due to the COVID. And, um, this is a discussion item, so I think that that would be part of what we're looking at with the first item was kind of co-joined in my book, but we're making forward motions to go back and correct a problem that was created by opening things up and getting too much activity at one time.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I could, uh, explain this a little bit, this is something I'd like to do for, uh, a number of reasons, but, um, as, as you can tell, I wanted to kind of run it by council, get council's take on it. Uh, it is more of a return to phase one posture for us. If you recall, we went through a number of phases, and phase one was, the, the goal was to slow the spread. Um, there's been recent scientific articles that point to public indoor unventilated spaces as places where spread increases. COVID nineteen is airborne and can be transported through HVAC equipment, putting people who are even sitting in enclosed offices at risk. So this decision supports public responsibilities. Uh, the business of, of the city will continue. The UV light will continue to be used. It, it can do nothing to protect against people who get infected going about their personal lives and bringing infection into the city. It is for disinfecting interior surfaces and common spaces only. As you mentioned, we've had six deaths in the, in Brevard County in the last twenty-four hours, and we're now at twenty-six. Uh, yesterday, the U.S. as a whole saw over sixty thousand new cases, which was a new record. The U.S. death toll is approaching a hundred and forty thousand. Nearly half of Florida's ICUs currently are at least ninety percent full. Uh, hospital capacity has been reached in numerous Florida hospitals across the state, including Miami, Tampa, and Orlando. Um, county first responders are getting more calls to help assist COVID nineteen patients. I was at, uh, the quest, tried today to try to get my fasting blood labs done for my doctor appointment. I couldn't even be seen because of all the number of people there that wanted to get tested. Um, and I think it's also interesting to point out that if Florida were its own country, it would have the second worst COVID nineteen outbreak in the world at this point in time, making the state the new global hotspot for the pandemic. So the, the, the purpose of this is not only looking out for employees who are fearful, but also protecting the public, leading by example. As I said, the business of the city will continue. Uh, we'll be, have people in the facilities, more of a skeleton crew. We're already prepared for a number of people working remotely, and, and some of us are already. And I believe this is implementing a best practice at this time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I know, I think, uh, personally, reopening the state like they did was a mistake. Opening Disney, a mistake. Opening SeaWorld, a mistake. I think it's, uh, too fast, too quick. And, uh, I, I'm not going in places. I'm not going for the mere fact that I think there's too much of the chance of getting that virus in those places. I'm gonna, uh, let city council discuss what they want to do with this. I think personally, I'm in favor of it. I backed Todd on it. I've already told him I, I think it was the right thing to do. We maybe should have never opened City Hall, so. Council, we'll start off with Mickey on the left side of the screen.
You know, the safety of our employees and the staff and everyone else is a priority, absolutely. I don't agree with shutting down City Hall, which makes me the bad guy, I guess. But I just, you know, Todd said a lot about what's happening in Florida. Florida is the hotspot. You know, the hospitals that are filled are in Tampa, Orlando, Miami, all the major uh, hubs of the city. I think that, um, again, you know, like we talked about before, we have zero deaths in our city. I just don't, I, I don't, I, when is this gonna end? When, I mean, what are we gonna have to redo our high vet, our air conditioning system? Um, I, I just don't know, you know, uh, like I said before, CDC says there is no insurance on zero risk of infection. In two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, there was thirty-five million point five, thirty-five point five million cases of influenza in our country. A lot of people died, but we didn't shut down the whole world. We didn't shut down businesses, and I think in this big, beautiful city hall, if, if it was cubicles like it was in the old city hall, I would say definitely. But here, what we're trying to tell the public to do as far as social distancing, washing your hands, wearing masks, is very capable of happening here in City Hall. You can come into your office, you can shut your door, you can do your job, um, and not see anybody for the whole day. Um, you know, we spent a lot of money, um, well, not, you know, I guess in the big scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but, you know, two thousand seventy dollars in masks and, and, um, gloves and face cloths. We've had donate cloths, face cloths donated from, um, businesses and people that are, uh, you know, residents that have donated to the, uh, city. Um, I think you can quarantine yourself for fourteen days. You can, and on the fifteenth day, you can come to work and, I, I mean, how, and, and get the virus. You know, if we're closing leisure services, the building, are we, are we ending tennis and uh, pickleball and the classes that are gonna be there? So now people cannot go outside in fresh air and exercise. I just think that, you know, the seven thousand dollars that we spent on the UV light to protect areas. Um, and then also I think as a city and as City Hall, if this is the new normal, maybe we as the leaders need to get the staff in here and show how it is capable to go on with your life and do, have the city function and wear your mask and, and wash your hands, and there are sanitizing stations all over in here. Um, maybe we need to, to be the leaders on that, more education on how, okay, we have this COVID thing, it's hanging around, but we have to figure out a way to live our lives as well. And I think shutting down, um, City Hall is, is just the opposite of teaching people how to live a new, normal life. I think that, uh, like I said, forty-four cases in Cape Canaveral, that's cumulative to, again, how many people have had it and have been over it. How many pieces, you know, the numbers are spiking because more people are getting tested. I just think that, you know, we have private offices with doors, we have thermometers, we have, uh, hand sanitizers, we have Xs all over the floor where people can social distance. I think if people come to City Hall and, and need to talk to someone, we have eight-foot conference tables that the person can sit at one end and the director or whoever can sit at the other end. I think it's possible to go on with the business of the city and also maintain um, the CDC standards, set an example for the rest of the city and the rest of the businesses on this is how you move on under a, under this horrible invisible monster that is around. That's just my opinion, just what I've been thinking, um. That's really, I just think that, um, we need to figure out how to move on and still be, you know, aware and of this COVID thing, but, and take the best precautions we can, but we can't shut down everything and hide until it goes away.
Thank you, Councilmember Kellum. Um, i- if you're done, and Mayor, if you, if you would oblige, I know that, uh, Melinda Huser, who's our incident commander, is itching to speak. Uh, she has some additional information. If it's okay, I'd ask her to speak now.
Uh, yeah, I guess the council wants, uh, no problem, but I was just gonna let the council go ahead and air off, and then we go back to staff. Anybody ready to hear, Melinda? All right, okay. I don't want to interrupt anybody's thought. Okay, uh, Melinda, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember, Councilmember. Okay, um, I totally agree with some of your points, um, Councilmember Kellum. But right now, this is a pandemic, and we've had phased into phase two because the curve was flattening. But as you know, the curve is increasing. Back on May thirty-first, the city of Cape Canaveral had two confirmed COVID nineteen cases, and that has grown to forty-four today. So in between July, June twenty-eighth to today, we've had over a two hundred and fifty percent increase. Um, that's scary, and that is gonna exponentially increase. And what I'm scared for as the incident commander is the safety of our staff. We have a number of personnel and staff members who are over the age of sixty with underlying health conditions. Most departments are only one man deep. Last weekend, I spent extensive hours tracing where one of our staff members were around a COVID nineteen staff member positive. And due to HIPAA, I cannot release any more information, but we almost lost half of a staff for a particular department. Then the city would have to outsource to get personnel to run this department, and that would be an increased cost that is not budgeted. Now, when we were in phase one back in March and April and May, the city was still able to sustain full operations, keeping staff members protected and safe, but at the same time providing operations and support to the citizens. At, and this is what we're just recommending, is to gradually go back down to phase one, protect the staff, still provide services to the, um, citizens and to vendors, and just work as it on a day-by-day basis. Because, um, I believe by doing this, this protects the city and protects the staffs and the citizens too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melinda. Okay, um, Ms. Morrison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I'm reading through this, and I, and it says that it is in the opinion of the city manager that these decisions are fully within the administrative authority of the office of the city manager and do not require city council approval. And so that's in Todd's opinion. Um, I'd like to get Anthony's opinion on that. Who, because if that's true, you know, we don't, I think we, we don't need to say anything. I mean, if Todd, you feel that's the right decision for you and your staff, then, then go for it. Now, if if you're just doing this to run it by us for concerns, or I don't even know, are we gonna take a, is this something that you want us to vote on? Because I'm not comfortable, you know, voting on something that's not within my authority. I think that that's something, I can give you my opinion on it, but ultimately.
Yeah, I think.
Your judgment.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Morrison. Yeah, I'm more or less running it by because I understand it's a controversial issue. Uh, and, and there is a tag along to this, that is about, uh, city council meetings and, and board meetings. Uh, a- as you know, we've, we've struggled with some of the technology to have hybrid meetings when, when we were having them. Um, this meeting is flawless. Uh, I don't think we will, probably won't hear any complaints about audio or video quality like we did during the hybrid meetings. So the tag along to this is I'd also like to have those public meetings continue this way by, uh, the GoToWebinar virtual platform until we can get to a point where we can just have them in person. Now, staff is, uh, talking with a company, uh, that specializes in this and does it for other cities. It's an agenda creation, uh, software plus, um, multimedia presentation that would take care of all of those issues for us theoretically. And it's, there's an expense associated with that. So, uh, we were supposed to, uh, have a, a presentation from yesterday. Um, because of tonight's meeting, we, that we postponed that because we were so busy. Yesterday, we're gonna reschedule that, and we'll have some cost information back to the city council in a couple of weeks here on what that would cost to get there, but. So the tag along with this is not only do I, I support the closing of the two facilities, but I also support the council meetings and board meetings going completely virtual for the interim time, for this period of time.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. And, um, Anthony, if you're there, uh, who, who has the authority to close these two facilities?
Um, well, I think when it comes to the management of the city employees and their safety, ultimately, the, the city manager needs to make a call regarding how he wants to manage, manage the employees. So, you know, related to that is, is the, this, you know, where the employees actually work and what he thinks, um, you know, is, is best for, for the employees from a management standpoint. However, you know, the issue is not a real bright line, because as you know, the city council has an office that they use at City Hall. You, the city council has its chambers at City Hall, so you know, there, there's some direct impact on how the city council uh, conducts its business regarding whether City Hall is going to be open, uh, to the public. And that's something that I think the council, uh, needs to definitely weigh in on because it, it, again, it impacts your office.
Right. So can Todd close our office and close our city council chambers without our approval?
I think, um, if the, no, no, if the council wants to continue to conduct its meetings in person, that's a council decision.
Okay, so the meeting for employees, that makes sense. Todd's gonna make the best decisions for his team. I get that. Um, city, uh, as far as for this body, the majority of us, we will decide on where we want to meet. And so it's kind of a split decision. And Todd's saying, hey, well, if, if my team wants to come to your, to your, um, council meetings, we're gonna be remote. Um, I don't have a problem with that. If you want to dial in remote to our city council meetings, that's fine. But to say that we have to meet remotely, um, I think that's for the council to decide, you know, if my opinion is, you can do either or. You can be remote, or you can go into City Hall. But I think there's another piece to this. While Todd's over the employees and we govern ourselves, there's the people, the citizens of this community. And that falls back on the council's shoulders largely on giving access to people with disabilities, people who may not have internet, people who may not be comfortable with using technology. We saw that that last city council meeting was at the, pretty, it was pretty well attended, but they were all spaced out. And so I think that tonight, if you're looking for a blessing, um, you know, I want to, I'm a fan of fixing the problems, and I was really happy to hear that, like, we shouldn't be doing virtual meetings because our audio equipment isn't working. I like the path you're headed down, Todd, to fix that problem so that we can have the, the best, um, transparency, where citizens, uh, you know, zoomed in, we're gonna be getting into the budget here soon. And so I think that we need to make this a priority, and I will speak on it, is we want zoomed-in cameras like people like this. They can see our face. They can see our emotion. We want to have no more hiccups. We wanna have no more hiccups. Whatever that software is, that sounds exciting, and so I think we, we do need to fix those problems and. And, um, as fast as possible, because we do limit people's access when we do this, and I don't like that. Having all options, you can call in, you can walk in, you can web elect in, you can whatever is the best. But if you and your staff wanna stay safe and not come to that meeting, I respect that. I think that that's, that's a decision for you and your team to make, um, for yourselves, and I think that this council, if. Me and, uh, you know, the mayor, the only ones up there, well, that's fine. I respect each individual council member to make their own decisions too. Um, but I do think that when we have those City Hall open citizens in to come, and then just the service side of our City Hall. You know, as far as to say, uh, Melinda said that, you know, we were, we had full operations, that doesn't make full sense to me. Um, back in phase one, because, you know, if you're shutting down summer camps. And we're, we're not in full operation, and if we're shutting down, uh, people coming home isn't full operation. Full operation is that you could walk into City Hall and get service, and that there's a clear glass. And so I think that, um, being able to get things done, I'm a huge fan of virtual network office. Heck, if it was up to me, we would have never built City Hall. Let's do a whole City Hall virtual office and go lease out that office space to people. But, um, that's behind us, so I think you can work from home. I think that's a great idea to stay safe. Um, but I do am concerned about the service, um, that people are gonna expect when they go there. As far as the being consistent with the governor's orders, we're talking about going back to phase one right now. The governor didn't go back to phase one, but we've often said, oh, we're gonna stay consistent with the governor's orders. And I hear we're touting out Florida statistics, but from what I'm seeing. Yes, today was a record day in death, but. We are still not, what I would say is that. That Brevard County is doing much better than some of the other, the counties in. But really, it's not about Brevard County. We don't have authority over Brevard County. It's about the city of Cape Canaveral. And we are doing exceptionally well. The data that's really hard to get is how many, and, and if you can tell me this, I would appreciate it. How many hospitalizations do we have in the city of Cape Canaveral? Positive cases don't tell the whole story. How many hospitalizations do we have in the city of Cape Canaveral? Or I'll take it, it's not as good, the three, two, nine, two, O area code. And further, how many deaths? That's what I don't know, because that's the data that matters, not. Not the whole thing doesn't matter on positive. I mean, uh, we live in a world where viruses has been haunting us for years. This one is not one to play with, but to me, we're shutting down City Hall based on what data in Cape Canaveral. What data in Cape Canaveral says we need to shut all this down? And if it's, we went from two to forty, forty-four. What if all forty-four of those people are? You know, I gotta think most of those are starting, are recovered, a large portion of them now. And the truth, we all know, there's more people that have, forty-four does not represent how many people have COVID in Cape Canaveral. There's gonna probably be hundreds. Because everyone doesn't get tested, and we have asymptomatic people who walk around with this virus, and that's what scares people. I get it. But really, we gotta look at hospitalizations, and we gotta look at deaths, and we don't get great numbers for Cape Canaveral on those too. And if we do, I'm not seeing anything that would justify it. Ultimately, Todd, you can do what you want with your staff and your team. Anthony's cleared that up. Um, personally, I would try to keep it open if you just want my opinion, as much as you. Um, I would try to, to take your leisure services department on an individual basis. I mean, if one kid has an issue. You know, if your whole staff is wearing masks, and we believe that masks work. Then why, why are we closing? If you're social distancing at City Hall, then why are you closing? If you're sanitizing everything, and we bought six, seven thousand dollars sanitizing machines. Why are we closing? If we've got hazmat suits on that we spent hundreds of dollars on, I echo what Councilmember Kellam said, now that I've thought of it. Then why, why are we closing? If, if face masks work, then let's just wear face masks and social distance. But I don't have any authority over that. That's just my opinion. So I gotta trust that you, you see the day to day operations. You know what's best for your team. I believe in you. I know you'll make the right choice. But I do hope that you can think about the data. If whatever data you use today in Cape Canaveral and hospitalizations and deaths. What data are you gonna see, need to see for, to open it back up? That's the concern. Our, our healthcare system in Cape Canaveral is not overwhelmed. Uh, uh, we are, we are well equipped. We've got plenty of ICU beds, and we are seeing people. Behave responsibly in the city. Yes, positive cases are going up, but that doesn't mean that it's all bad. It does not. Um, positive cases are gonna go up, and I heard a couple of statements, very bold. Is that it is going to exponentially increase. I don't know who's got the, the crystal ball. Cause I don't know how you're, we're able to say it's definitely gonna exponentially increase. It's been down, it's been up. And so I think we're all just kinda taking it one day at a time. I'm gonna keep washing my hands, wearing my face mask. And social distancing, and that's what I think the best way forward. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, I can, um, okay. And I can remember, um, months ago when Councilman Morrison said, well, we only have two cases. Well, now we have forty-four cases. So it ha, it has, it has increased. NASA, Department of Defense, Department of Navy, they're all working remotely. Is he saying that their, their employees are more important than ours? Our import, our employees at the city of Cape Canaveral are just as important as all these other places, and they're working remotely. I know he doesn't have as much expertise as NASA, and they decided to let their employees go home and work remotely. I think Todd, we hired him as a city manager, and I think we need to let him do his job. His job is to manage the, the citizens, excuse me, the employees of the city, and I think he's doing an excellent, excellent job. Now, the question comes in with where do we wanna have the city council meetings? And I kinda agree with Councilman, um, Morrison that maybe that's his decision that we need to make. But as far as closing City Hall, I think he has the authority to do that. And I think if there's one chance that one of our employees can come down with COVID. We need to take every precaution possible to ensure that it doesn't happen. But I am on board with Todd. Let Todd do his job. We hired him four to one. Let him do his job and make that kind of decision reference on employees. And as far as closing City Hall down, we're not closing it down. Um, the services are still gonna be there. The people can still get what they need to have done, done. Unless I'm speaking, um, if, if it's not true, but I think the services are still there. I like Todd being able to handle, um, the situation as we have it now. Now, that might be something for us to decide. Reference how we're gonna handle our city council meetings. Thank you.
Core services will be maintained.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Angela?
Thank you for remembering my name. Uh, I, we have to keep our sense of humor. I think it's very important. Uh, in this case, I agree with Mickey and Wes. I think that, yes, Todd will make the final decision, but my opinion is with Mickey and Wes. We are out of phase one, and I feel that, um, the way that we have our City Hall organized. And the doors can be kept shut, people are taking temperatures. I think that we can keep City Hall open. As far as the recreation department. I think that is a decision that perhaps should be made by our Director of Leisure Services. I don't know exactly what's going on there, but I will have a discussion tomorrow when I go to play tennis. Even, uh, I just have to give a point. Even if the complex is closed, we can still play tennis there, and we have. All through the pandemic, we've been playing tennis pretty much there. So just because the office is closed and personnel is not there. We can still play tennis, and people are playing tennis and pickleball and racquetball on a daily basis. Uh, Todd told me that forty percent, I believe, of the city staff are working from home. And I think that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I think that, um, people have different health, and they have different family priorities that they have to tend to. That's fine, and if you have a preexisting condition, you might be better off at home. However, on the rest of it, I agree one hundred percent what Mickey has to say and what Todd has to say. Excuse me, not Todd, Wes. As far as city council, I feel that we need to go back to the council chambers for meetings. Because I think that's what, what works best for us. It's very difficult at times. Especially going over the budget. I would like to see us in the city chambers. That's my opinion on that. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna ask a few questions. I, I will support whatever. But I have a question to ask Todd. Todd, if we hold our city meetings at the city council chambers. And we have to do it by the CMT. Where, we had a problem with our audio and our input from the public, did we not?
We did, and the, the problem is, well, imagine all the computers that we're each looking at right now. Being in front of us at the dais, there would be a massive amount of audio feedback, so that's not practical. So we tried to reduce that to one device in the council chambers, which was on an iPad at the back of the room. Um, and it, and it worked, but it didn't work great. The audio quality wasn't great. It was far away. You couldn't see people's faces. That's the only solution we currently have for a hybrid meeting in the city council chambers. So my reason for asking you this question is because. It doesn't really work that way. It doesn't work well that way currently. We need to get a new platform. We need to find out what's out there. We need to spend the money to get something to make this happen, but we're not there yet. Because we're not there yet, my request is that we continue council meetings just like we're doing right now. Until we get there.
Okay, I know we had some problems with, with that, and it's very hard to hear the public speaking through that pad. And I know what the problem is, and, and of course, it's gonna take some sizable mon, amount of dollars to cure the problem. That's what I've been un, understanding. Now, if we go back to City Hall, we have to live with that, correct?
We don't have another option. That's correct.
Okay, so I will not support going back to City Hall for that reason. Because we've already had complaints. We had public records requests to, many questions as to why, and it's. It's something that is new to everybody, so. There may be a cure for that problem out there, but I don't know, and I think staff's working on trying to cure that problem. But we haven't got the cost yet, and right now, we're looking at sizable amount of losses. Due to this problem that everybody's incurred, so. I don't favor going to City Hall, so when we support, or vote to support it, I'm not gonna support going to City Hall. I think we're doing just fine right here, and there's public that, like Mr. Morrison says, yeah, they. I got a wife that don't even know how to turn a computer on, but that's her, her choosing. She don't wanna learn. But if people wanna partake in these type of meetings, then I think they'll figure out a way to do it, go to a neighbor's house with a neighbor. So that aspect of not participating, that's gonna be the person's choice not to participate. Not because they don't have a computer or, they'll figure out a way to participate. They email you, that's participating. We get those emails and plenty of, plenty of time to look at it and see who emailed the city and. They voiced their opinion by email rather than standing there at a microphone that we can't hear. So I, I for one, I won't support going back to City Hall. The discussion between the Nancy Hansen Recreation Department and Todd, I'm sure was worked out. Uh, and I'd like to ask Todd just a question, referring back to staff. I know before, when we closed City Hall, council could get in, you had access to it. I was in and out many times, I'm sure. You people went and got your mail, then stopped you from going there. But the thing about it is that you get people that come into City Hall. We're telling them they gotta wear a mask. So we're back to our encouragement again. But it's not encouraged, it's demanding. They come in City Hall, they gotta wear a mask. So that to me is a problem. You wanna come in City Hall and do business, you gotta wear a mask. And, and even gloves were out there at one time, but I don't see the gloves no more. So, I, I'm not gonna support City Hall meetings. And I do support Todd in his closure of the complex, as long as that was done in unison with the directors and staff. And Todd, can I ask you a question on staff at City Hall?
Yes, sir.
The people that you have in there are just gonna be essential people, or people that wanna choose to work there better? Work there for a better reason of not working from home?
That's correct. Essential people only to maintain those core services. We're really fortunate that so many of the City Hall employees can and do work remotely. Um, I wanna also point out some information that recent, just came into me, that there's only one bed left in that Cape Canaveral Hospital ICU currently. Um, and I think part of what we're doing here is saying, let's make a preventive measure here to make sure we're not adding numbers to hospital beds. And that's, that's behind this thinking as well, but no, employees can work from home. Um, a lot of them already are. We're tasked right now to staff even the front counter, finding, um, you know, staff who even wants to work the front counter. Um, so that, those are all things that are, are in my mind when I make these, uh, these decisions and these have these conversations with you.
You, you say they don't wanna work it for what reason, other than the fear of being in contact with somebody? Is that?
Yeah, o, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I know we, we had, we had the one lady there that was there, and she's not there, but. Uh, your others, your other staff members are staff members that man those booths are from the other departments that are there. But if they fear working there, then I, I can't blame them. I can't blame them. I fear just going out. I fear going out to places. I don't wanna go out no more. I don't wanna go out and sit around and lollygag. I don't, I don't wanna do that. So I, I'm, I'm behind what you've done, Todd. I, I support it. Uh, with the numbers, the way they're rising, why should we take the chance of leaving City Hall open and? Have meetings and, and the people that come into the meeting, if we have a council meeting, they're got to wear a mask. You got people out there that, and even council tonight saying, they don't, you demanding the math. You're, you're, you're trying to eat your cake and keep icing and burn the candles and everything at one time here. So I'm a. I'm not gonna say anymore on item two. I'm, I'm gonna not support. Opening City Hall or the, or the record, I'm supporting just the way it's written. Anybody got anything they wanna add to it?
Well, I just have a question.
Sure. Mickey, Mickey, you got her hand up. Let, let Mickey go. She's got her hand up too before you. Go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions. Um. Are, are we furloughing any nonessential employees, Todd?
At this point, there's no reason to, because the employees who are working remotely are capable of being productive employees.
So the people at Leisure Services that we're gonna shut down, are we furloughing anybody there?
We are making every attempt to not have to do that.
Okay, and then my other question was on this, um, sheet that we got from, uh, John. On the COVID nine, uh, expenses, we spent twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars on IT-related. Things, IT-related. IT related expenditures. So for the go to uh, meetings and ten thousand dollars for something else, that wasn't anything that would help us with what we're going through now?
Uh, I'll ask John to respond to that, what what those items were. John, are you available?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're good.
Yeah, uh, Mickey, the ten thousand dollars, obviously, when you have people working remotely and you had to have all this equipment, you know, serviced and whatever, and then monitored and what have you, that's our IT consultant. That's the money that you have to pay him. You have to pay somebody. Things break down sometimes, you know, things go offline. That's common. Everything doesn't just magically work all the time. I mean, look at council. Sometimes your computer's not working or you forget your password and somebody's gotta do that. So these are all, this is all IT support. You can't get by without IT support. You guys wouldn't be here without IT support.
Okay.
Yeah. And all those, all those expenses, Mickey, um, once you guys in the twenty first approve that interlocal agreement and it doesn't need to be a real discussion, just approve it so I can get with the county and I could claim our thirty eight thousand dollars with them.
Yeah, I just was wondering if it was any kind of equipment that would help us where we were are now with audio problems and all that, but that's a whole separate different.
Yeah, that's like, we we've addressed, I mean, obviously, we've taken all the steps. Any equipment or IT hardware, software to try to make that all work. I mean, staff has done an amazing, an amazing job making sure that you guys can meet in council chambers and stuff. Um, but yeah, I mean, IT things are free and, you know, it takes constant um, constant work to make sure they're uh, working correctly. So um, but I mean, as far as everything you see on that, everything you see on that, those expenditures were needed for the city to be functioning. Hey, this is a roller coaster. We don't know where we're going. I mean, you know, once we're in phase one, then we're in phase two, now we're going back to phase one. You know, you got people getting sick, people out of work.
Right. I I got it. I just was wondering if that was, if that was anything we could use now. I I understand that it's all necessary and, you know, and we'll get reimbursed for it all. I was just wondering, you know, that's twelve thousand dollars is a lot of money and I just thought maybe it was something we could use now.
No, that's money already spent. That's money already spent.
Right.
Not towards making virtual hybrid meetings.
No, no, no.
Yeah, that was, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So what? Do we have a time and an amount on when? Cause I'm looking at the next meeting. No, we've got the budget. This council has the authority to to move money, to set appropriation, whatever we need to do, transfer. Todd, if it's not a money problem and it's just finding the right firm to get in here and to get our City Hall, cause I hear the mayor loud and clear, we all share that same feeling. We deserve, our citizens deserve the best. If you wanna keep Cape Canaveral safe, they should be able from their home be able to look at their council members, hear their council members from their home, or they can walk in and 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 listen and hear it at a city hall if they don't have those resources at home, if they don't have internet at their house. And trust me, people's internet's getting cut off when these, when these hard um, economic runs happen and people that aren't savvy. Look, it's a testament. The last meeting was hybrid. People still show up. And so I think.
If I may, Midwest, excuse me if I may, I think I could help actually help you here. What you're suggesting is is due to COVID nineteen. So absolutely, we could spend the money if we wanted to go in that direction and we would be reimbursed for that through CARES. That is because care, because the, but because this this pandemic is driving exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. So I think that now's the time to strike that we get um, multiple, whatever the 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 network infrastructure, multiple cameras, a good software. I mean, watch the city of Rockledge. Uh, meetings, very well done, high quality. Look at the counties. And I heard earlier, Todd, you were talking about the agenda and I know you guys are working on it. I'd like to get from this council. I think we would all be on board to make that a priority, um, so that each council member can choose or city staff whether they wanna be there or not. And so I would support making that a priority. Could you get it done before July meeting? I don't think that that's realistic. I mean, unless you, unless somebody can come in and do it. But if you could pull that off, that would make me really happy.
I wouldn't. I wouldn't count on that.
Yeah, that's why I said it's it's hard, but as soon as possible, by the end of the month, I think that's realistic. I know there's firms that can come in and get it set up for us. So um, I don't, when we say we're gonna close, I don't wanna be in in August. I wanna have the ability to go to City Hall in August and have working equipment. Would the citizens deserve that? Um, high quality. Everyone has a microphone. They've got all the gadgets and gizmos now. And if we're gonna be sitting in a four or five million dollar City Hall, we should have a few thousand dollars in on the right IT and and video um, software. And we got the budget for it. I know the money's there, just a matter of priority.
Yep, working on it.
That was all I had, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't think, I just have a question for you. Are we gonna be voting on anything? I mean, I know we can make a motion for any. Yeah, this is.
Consensus basically from council and kind of letting Mr. Mr. Morley know if he's in the right direction there until we get where you wanna get. I'm sure we'll get there one day, but it it can't happen tonight or tomorrow. To take a little money, which the money's gonna be there. We we know we got CARE money coming that we can do things with. But it's gonna take the time to get it, get the bugs worked out of the system and put a system there that works. And then we can all go into the meetings and there's no problem, but I don't wanna go back to a catastrophe like we had the last meeting. It was, you couldn't hear, I don't think you was, you know, the breaking up, the people were breaking up because the service wasn't good coming out of it. So it's uh, that's the only reason. Otherwise, yeah, I like going to City Hall and seeing everybody personally and seeing the public there. But when you've got something that's not working, we don't need to be there. This works great right here. But if there's not people out there that wanna get online with us, they don't want, they're not interested in what's going on evidently, or they they surely may not know about it too with a little short notice. So there's a lot of things that we gotta do to get it right, but we're trying.
Yeah, and Councilmember, I didn't even, can you imagine working through the budget on this stuff? I mean, this is being in person on the budget is so much better. And, you know, we're gonna do what we can do. So my one priority, as soon as possible, we have the option to go back to City Hall. Thank you.
I'm sure they'll work on it. Mr. Brown. Angela, I'll get to you. Mr. Brown, you?
I have nothing else. If we're still gonna take a lengthy amount of time, then we need to take a break. But if we're almost getting ready to wind up.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna go to Angela and then we'll close it. That's it. Angela?
I move that we adjourn.
You ready to quit? I'd like to have just any comment from staff before we adjourn. I always wanna have staff input of something they wanna come back out.
I have nothing additional at this point. Is there any other staff that has anything?
I see no hands raised.
I see uh, an alert that Anthony is talking, but I don't hear him. I don't, I wonder if Anthony's muted. No. Okay, thank you.
Okay, staff, our being staff council, are we gonna let Mr. Morley keep the way we are right now? That's written here tonight? Is that consensus?
Until.
Until we get the problem at City Hall fixed. And this kinda doesn't weigh as much as it on the recreation area.
Are we all happy? So CMT meetings until we have the next solution.
But I, yeah, I think that yeah, that makes sense. I mean, but I'm trying to look at Mickey, are you at, are you in the City Hall office? Are you? You're in the City Hall office? Yeah. Yeah, I just, I think that you know, if I, that we should be able to go to City Hall if that's where we need to be. Uh, and if we, if we're not interfering with that, I I think you're gonna.
Well, our first, our first virtual meetings, Mickey's always been at City Hall. Angela was at City Hall. I mean, everybody and Mike was at City Hall one time, but I think I recall. Uh, but City Hall as far as functioning with public is what Todd is trying to control. Employees will be in City Hall. You have the right to go in City Hall. You can go use the office for virtual meetings like Mickey's doing. Nobody used my office. I think Angela used it before a couple of times. There's no problem, but getting the virtual meetings to where we can have public input at the council chambers is not possible right now. Virtual meetings right here like we're doing? Great. This is great. I I don't think we have any problem. But also we haven't had any public discussion on this before we leave also. But I just wanna know if Mickey, if you're happy with things the way they are and where we're headed with Wes, Mr. Brown, and Angela, and then we'll go to public and close. Uh, a wave hand or nod your head or?
I I don't I don't think that they, we should close City Hall, but it's up to Todd. We did hire him. I have all the confidence in the world that he's gonna do the right thing. I personally don't agree that we should shut City Hall. We spent a lot of money on this City Hall. And um, but it's up to um.
I think he's looking up. He's looking out for his employees right at the moment and I don't blame him. I'd look out for mine as well, so.
Right. And I I think that we should spend whatever money we need to spend, especially right now under the COVID nineteen to get the right equipment we need so we can go back to the chamber as soon as possible.
That's what we're looking for tonight. That's what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now we're gonna go to public on open discussion and then we will adjourn after that.
There are no hands raised.
No hands raised? Adjourned. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Take care.